I guess when they make you chairman, you become all-powerful. Oz. I am the great and powerful Oz. Okay. That's right. Bring me that broom. Okay, so we're gonna elect the Board of Education Chairman. Are there any nominations for Chair? Yes, Ms. Pitko.
I nominate Phil Dwyer.
All right, nomination for Phil Dwyer. Is there a second? Anybody want? You don't have to second it. Somebody want a second it? Mr. Patton wants a second. Okay, Mr. Dwyer, do you accept?
Yes, I do.
Okay, any other nominations? Yes.
I'll nominate Donna Carnell.
All right, doesn't have to be a second. Second, Mr. Llewellyn, do you accept? Okay, any other nominations? All right, nominations are closed, so all in favor of Mr. Dwyer, raise your hand. And all of those in favor of Ms. Carnell, raise your hand. Mr. Dwyer is elected six to three. Congratulations, I guess. Board of Education Vice Chairman, are there any nominations for Vice Chairman? Mrs. Gerber has a nomination.
Yes, I'd like to nominate Mr. Calabrese.
Okay, is there a second? Doesn't have to be one. Second by Ms. Pitko, do you accept the nomination? Okay, is there another nomination for Vice Chair?
I nominate Mr. Llewellyn.
Okay. You accept? Okay, any other nominations? All right, so we have two nominees, so all in favor of Mr. Calabrese, raise your hand. And all of those in favor of Mr. Llewellyn. Six to three, Mr. Calabrese, congratulations. Board of Education Secretary, is there a nomination for Secretary?
I nominate Mrs. Gerber.
Okay. Second, okay. Do you accept? All right, is there another nomination for Secretary? No nominations for Secretary, so we will close the nominations for Secretary. All in favor of Mrs. Gerber for Secretary, please raise your hand. Unanimous. Congratulations to all the officers. I'm now off duty for this post.
Thank you. I look forward to another year, especially as this board sets to work at providing the resources and the guidance to implement the District Improvement Plan. I think we have a lot of work in front of us, and if we can stay focused on that, I think we'll be in good shape, and this school district will be in good shape. Our next item on the business is the discussion of the Board of Education bylaws. As you know, bylaws are required to be presented in advance in the call of the meeting now, based on the last bylaw change. No bylaw changes were recommended or provided for the Thursday meeting of the call of the meeting, but we can have people suggest items that they would like to pursue, and then what you would have to do is make sure that that correctly worded bylaw is provided to Meg Brown the Wednesday before, so it can get in the packet, in the Thursday packet that gets emailed to you, so that you get the proper notice required by the bylaw. So with that as a process, are there any suggestions that people will want to make regarding bylaws? The ideas that they would like to alert the board that they're gonna work on? Mrs. Maxson-Cannelli.
Well, I don't know what the substance of it will be. I would like to take a closer look at public comment, again, comparative to the rest of the district, in conversation through CAE, to perhaps come up with a new suggestion for public comment.
Any other ideas that people wish to pursue? Mr. Llewellyn?
I would like to bring forth the concept of three board members being able to add something to the agenda, and I've got exact language if you'd like it now.
No, we don't need it now, just make sure it gets to Mrs. Brown, so that she can get in the call. Any other suggestions that will be brought forward? You don't need to say them tonight, but you do need to get the properly worded motion that you're going to propose to Meg, Mrs. Brown, by the Wednesday, so she can get it in the Thursday packet prior to the December 8th meeting, the Thursday prior to the 8th meeting. Any other suggestions that board members will, would like to bring up to the board at the moment? Hearing none, thank you very much. We'll move on to discussion of Board of Education Committee and Liaison assignments. I have shared the list of committee and liaison assignments with our two new board members. The rest of you know what they are and know where you serve. Please let me know if you have any particular interests, and then once I collect all of the interests, I would like to be able to put that list together and have it distributed at the latest at the December 8th meeting. There are a couple of boards, specifically Parks and Recreation, Board of Health, whose meetings are held between now and December 8th, and they like to know who their liaison is. The other meetings aren't as pressing generally as those two. So if you have any requests, just email them to me or call me, and we'll move on from there. Not on the agenda for the organizational meeting, but twice in the last four years, the Board of Education has created goals for the board. Not goals for the staff or goals for the district, but goals for the board. One could argue that implementing, assisting, providing the resources to implement the District Improvement Plan is itself a fundamental goal that we all ought to be just working on, but I will be interested if individual board members or collectively that you would want to go through a goal-setting process again for the board. Let me know, and then I can kind of schedule meeting time and agenda time to discuss that matter. So absent board members requesting it, at the moment, I'm tempted to not go down that direction unless I hear support for that discussion. With no other business before us, a motion to adjourn.
Eileen has her hand.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Do you want us to express interest now, or were you saying later via email?
Yeah, just email or phone conversation or after the meeting, you know. It's not officially on for a discussion topic, so I don't want to have discussion because it hasn't been properly noticed. I just wanted to let you know that that is a topic that we ought to address, so just let me know, so I know whether to put it on the agenda or not. So, motion to adjourn, Mrs. Maxson-Cannelli, seconded by Mrs. Gerber. All in favor, please raise your hand. It is unanimous. So, Mr. Calabrese, if you could take your name plate and, you know, have name plate will travel. We do anticipate the students are arriving for a 7:30 start to a meeting. Mr. Cummings, in case the students are waiting outside because they think they should wait until 7:30, could you just?
The headmasters will get them.
Oh, the headmaster can go out there.
Yep.
Sorry, I looked to my left, I should've looked to my right. So we'll take a short pause, because they're virtually the first agenda item.
That's it. That's it.
If they all go that fast, I'll be late.
You can go, don't go behind that.
Yeah, I was gonna say that would be better.
That's Nene.
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 Thank you, Bill.
Looks like Nene is in here.
Sorry.
That's all right.
But I'm not that thin.
Donna's in here.
Yep. You go first, and then you go this way.
Nope.
So I call to order the regular meeting of the Board of Education for November 17th, 2015. Present is Mrs. Eileen Lou McCormick, Mr. Mark Patton, Ms. Donna Carnell, Mrs. Jessica Gerber, myself, Philip Dwyer, Mr. Anthony Calabrese, Ms. Tricia Pitko, and Mrs. Jennifer Maxson-Cannelli, and Mr. John Llewellyn. We have already had the Pledge of Allegiance with virtually everybody here, so I think I will dispense with the second Pledge of Allegiance and go directly on to student reports. And Fairfield Ludlow High School is first. Mr. Nene, do you wish to start, or Ms. Franko? Who wishes to start?
So, since our last meeting, I think one of the most important things that have gone on is obviously the lockdown that occurred, and I think that overall for the situation was handled quite well with the students, as well as the faculty and staff at Ludlow. I actually wasn't in school the day of lockdown, but I heard a lot, which I think makes my perspective a little more unique. A lot of the students said that the teachers responded very well once they realized it was not a drill, and that they felt remarkably comfortable considering the circumstances. And there were a lot of, they were very impressed with the police presence at the school, and which also helps with that feeling of security. And I think the student body is very grateful for the emotional support that was provided after everything had happened, and it helped a lot of students feel comfortable with coming back to school on Monday, so that was very important to the student body as well. Last Friday, Ludlow had their first advisory activity period, and last Friday it consisted of each homeroom watched a couple of inspirational videos that helped, talked about like determination and hard work and reaching your goals, and I think that really affected the seniors especially, because we're, most of us are going to college and furthering our education to prepare ourselves for what we're gonna do with the rest of our lives, so I think it was very helpful to see these people that were told for so long that they couldn't do something succeed at that. And continuing with the theme of the seniors, this week is our last spirit day, and in the past, we've run it a little differently. It used to be one week, every day we dressed up, and this week it's actually every Friday now, which the seniors are of course sad to see it end, but we recently bought Classic 2016 shirts, so our picture, I believe, is on December 7th, so we have that to look forward to now.
Thank you. Mr. Nene?
Hi, everyone. I see some new faces here today, as well as some familiar faces from the last meeting, so congratulations to everyone. Also, congratulations to Fairfield Ludlow's boys soccer team and girls volleyball team, both of which are FCAC champions, both beating Darien for the titles. The boys beat Darien to get their second FCAC title in a row, and the girls will be playing Cheshire at Foreign High School on Thursday in the state tournament, and there was going to be a fan bus, actually, but since one of the seniors signed up, I guess, that won't be happening, which is understandable. It's a fairly busy time of year right now. The early action, and then early decision deadlines for college applications has passed, but the regular decision deadline's still ahead of us. The first marking period ended last week, and we're in the second marking period now. The grades closed today. Also, we have eight student athletes who are going on to play Division One and Division Two sports from Fairfield Ludlow, and they were honored at a signing ceremony last week. So another thing I wanna follow up on, from what I said at the last meeting, was the PSAT Administration Day, where the seniors had the opportunity to either partake in a job shadow, a college visit, or to attend a seminar organized by the College and Career Center and the Guidance Counselors, and I think many of the students really took advantage of those opportunities. I know I went on a job shadow, and another thing I was gonna talk about is the lockdown that Isabelle mentioned, which I thought was handled very well by the school administration. The teachers really took charge and made sure everyone knew what was happening, and after like the very initial uncertainty of what was happening with like the news circulating in between all the students and through the phones and things, the police presence was very prompt, and so I believe everyone felt fairly safe, and the school offered counseling for anyone who needed it, which I thought was great. And we had our seniors' birthdays in the past few weeks, as Isabelle said, and we also had Halloween, and we got to see some exciting costumes, some creative ideas.
Any questions for our representatives from Fairfield Ludlow? Mrs. Maxson-Cannelli?
Just one quick question. I believe it's coming up. Are you familiar at all with the Sticks for Soldiers event? Is that going ahead with being planned for this year around Thanksgiving?
Yeah, I've seen they're putting things up for that, and I've talked to some of the lacrosse people who are organizing that.
I mean, is that something that community members go to? I know it's a fundraiser for wounded soldiers, but, and is it the Friday after Thanksgiving? Or Saturday? Okay, didn't mean to surprise you with the question, I just like to give it a plug, so if you knew more about it.
Any other questions for our Fairfield Ludlow students? If not, Ms. Aggelo and Ms. Schuster, who wants to go first?
Hi, I'm Brittany Schuster. Since the last time we met, we had our homecoming dance, which was a great turnout, everyone had a great time. We also had the pep rally, which was very enthusiastic, everyone was like really into it, so that was really cool. And we also had our football homecoming game, which we won. Also, our sports, they're going well. We ended all the season sports, like soccer, volleyball, lacrosse, cross-country. I actually wanna give a big shout-out to the cross-country team for the boys, 'cause they made it to the New England Tournament for the first time at Fairfield Ward, and many teams were qualified to the state and league tournaments, so I think it was really cool how they made it. We also had the Unified Sports, which they played several teams like Ludlow, New Canon, Greenwich, so it was a really good spirit of competition, ran very well, everyone had a good time. Also, the football team, our last game is Thanksgiving, so everyone's pumped for that, getting ready, we're all excited. We also had the PSATs on October 14th, the 10th and 11th graders took them. It was a, we had fantastic attendance, about only 14 people were absent, so about 700 people took the test, so it was very good turnout, very good.
Hi, I'm Ashley Aggelo, I'm the other Fairfield Ward student representative. During the PSATs that the 10th and 11th graders took, the 9th graders and 12th graders were also very preoccupied. The 9th graders were informed about Rachel's challenge, Rachel being the first student killed at Columbine, unfortunately. But this included school assemblies focused on kindness and compassion towards all, not specifically towards bullying, but basically being, you know, a good person. Also, the 12th graders were involved with college career workshops, learning how to form common applications, and writing their college essays, which I find was very helpful. I heard from students, like seniors in my AP classes, that they were working hard to get those in, spending, our seniors are very hardworking. Going off of colleges, we ended our college meetings with the admissions officers, I'm sorry, a few weeks ago, and I heard a lot about students going in, I heard a lot of talk about colleges that they were interested in, and it was great to see everyone be so enthusiastic about where they were going to go in their future. Secondly, I'd like to bring up the lockdown. It was very different at Ward than it was at Ludlow, and I was present, as well as Brittany, while this was happening. Ludlow, I heard, evacuated while Ward was still in school, because apparently the attack was focused on Fairfield Ward, as it was closest to Black Rock Turnpike, where the hostages were claimed to have been held. A lot of emotional distress was spread amongst the students, but the teachers remained calm, they knew exactly what they were doing, even though it was a bit of a surprise that it wasn't a drill. A lot of the upperclassmen helped with the lowerclassmen coming back into school. We made public announcements saying that, you know, if anyone needed counseling, if we needed to talk to teachers, if we needed to talk to anyone really, then there were going to be people available, so that made the transition back into school very, very comfortable, which we are all very appreciative of. We ended up staying in lockdown mode for about two hours, and then we went into lockout mode. No one came in, no one came out. A lot of the parents were congregating around the school, but no one was allowed to go in to see their kids, until a half-day was called, and we were all evacuated, once things were safe. The police attendance was prompt, as it was at Ludlow, and generally, I felt very safe going home. Lastly, we have had French exchange students come to Fairfield Ward, they were very welcoming. About 15 came, and they stayed for about 10 days. Brittany and I saw a few of them in our French, US History class, and they seemed interested in what we were learning in. They spent time here, they stayed with host families, they went to New York City, and they went to Yale University. Coming with two teachers, right before they left, they had a sort of graduation ceremony, and it was all very fun. I saw a lot of the students interacting with the French students, so it was really nice to get some diversity into the school.
Any questions for our Fairfield Ludlow students? Fairfield Ward, I'm sorry. I was thinking Dr. Tittle had wanted to make a comment on the lockdown, at the same time, thinking of the name of the school, my apologies. If there are no questions from the board, you want to make a comment on the lockdown?
I do have some longer comments to make, under superintendent's report about this, but just to be clear, all the schools of the district were locked down, even though the threats were at certain schools. So everybody was stuck in the same boat, all across the district, so I just wanna clear that up, but I just, I would say I appreciate the comments from the students about the lockdown, it's always good to hear your perspective on that, we appreciate that. It was a very stressful day for everybody, and I think the police chief said at one of the debriefings we had, that the real heroes in the lockdown were the teachers and the students, because you guys did great, so thank you.
No questions will, from the board, then we'll move on. You're welcome to stay for the meeting, or you're welcome to quietly slip out to get on to the rest of your evening. Thank you. Onto public comment, this is a period where members of the public can comment on discussion items that are on the agenda, and if you wish to make a comment on voting items, then you'll be allowed to make that at the time the item comes up for vote. So are there any members of the public that wish to come forward to talk about discussion items that are on the agenda? Seeing none, we'll move on. To old business, review of second year of teacher and administrator evaluation plans. Mrs. Leffert will walk us through and...
She's gonna use the projector, so the front need to move to the front row or sides.
Okay, so this is now our third year of the teacher and administrator evaluation plans. We've done a lot of heavy lifting over the past few years in making revisions to the plan. We, the first year, had about a half, half of our staff members participating in the plan. Last year was the first year that all of our certified staff participated in the educator evaluation. So part of our plan is, we need to make sure that we do a presentation to you, just to update you on the electronic side of the plan, and we didn't do a lot of tweaking to the application that we use for our data management system, but I thought it might be helpful for you to get a brief glimpse of what that looks like behind the scenes, what an administrator sees and what a teacher sees. So I gave you two documents from the last meeting, if you don't have them, just give Meg a shout, raise your hand, and she can get one to you. One is a paper with a yellow line down the center, cycle information, and the other is the Marzano rubric, and I'll be referring to both of those.
The new board members, both Mr. Calabrese and Ms. Pitco, if you'd like a copy of the teacher plan, I can get that for you, so that you have that and you can see what it looks like, both teacher and administrator evaluation plans, so you can take a look at those. I don't believe we provided those for you last week. So an administrator, when they're working with a particular staff member, would be logging into the system called ProTrax. And we work very closely with the, with the organization to build our plan and our documents into the, into the plan. During the beginning part of the school year, the teachers are getting to know students. So September and October is really getting to know students. Teachers are collecting baseline data. And they're, the buildings are working on school improvement plans. And we really look for our teachers to align the goals that they put into their teacher evaluation plan with both the school improvement plan and the district improvement plan. Mid-October to mid-November is when administrators are meeting with teachers to set their goals. I'll just give you a brief background again. Teachers are setting goals in the 45% area. Those are their targets for learning for kids, so that's the 45% area. There's a 5% area of aligning with the administrator's goals. There's a 10% area of using parent feedback to drive some practices that teachers want to implement in their building. And the 40% area is where administrators are observing teacher practice, where teachers are setting some focus areas for their instruction based on the Marzano rubric. So those are the four areas teachers are setting goals. So mid-October to mid-November is when they're working on their goal plans and goals are finalized by mid-November. Teachers then are working on their goals. You know, I think another piece to understand is that a goal that a teacher sets in their plan is not all that they're doing in their classroom. There can, there are lots of things that are going on in a classroom. These are focus areas for, for teachers, not the be-all and end-all of their instruction for the whole year. There's a mid-year review in February. Teachers and administrators get together. Where are you? How are things going? What have you noticed about your instruction? What have you learned? Is there anything different you want to do? This year, for the first time, our teachers are going to be doing an informal survey with their students and having conversations with their administrators at that mid-year review. And then by the end of the school year, there's a summative review with, with teachers, where everything is reviewed together and ultimately a summative rating is provided for every certified staff member. So here's what it looks like. I'm going to go into the goal plan first. So I have my teacher, John Sample. This is a training version, so you're not going, I'm not showing you anyone's real goal plan. But the goal plan comes up. And on this particular version, right now, the teacher has worked on two different goals. The 10% parent feedback, and they've chosen a goal there. And the teacher performance and practice area. So I'm just going to show you real briefly. A teacher would go into this, or an administrator would go into this, click on view. And it pops up with some directions here on what a teacher is supposed to do here. It refers them to the Marzano framework, which you have in front of you. A teacher is going to pick at least one focus area of the Marzano framework. There are 60 elements of instructional strategies and practices there. And a teacher is really going to focus mostly on Domain One, which is the classroom learning piece. And they're going to set a target for something that they would like to work on with their administrator. And teachers and administrators work on this together. So if you look at the learning map, Domain One has 41 different elements that a teacher could choose from. Some of our teachers lump some together. The school might have a target itself that they're working on. They want to work on academic rigor. So if you take a look at the framework in Domain One, right in the middle, with the purple lesson segment, there's something called DQ4 way on the bottom of that. And there are three elements there that a teacher might want to work on. So I'll show you those real quickly down here. So this design questions is really more academic rigor. This is more about deepening knowledge, extending knowledge. And the beginning part of this domain, right here, this design question, would be about introducing new learning to kids. And so teachers are really looking mostly down this line for areas of where they're going to improve their practice in a classroom. So they work on setting goals back on their goal plan. So once they've completed their goal, on the bottom, they can reflect on it during the course of the year. This document is a living document for the course of a year. A teacher can put evidence of what they've done to make progress towards their goal. Right now, the administrator could click on approve the goal. An administrator has to approve every single goal. At the end of the year, in the same area, a little bit lower, they're going to be able to rate each of these goal areas. All four goal areas are rated to come up with the final rating for a teacher. The other side of this planning is all of the forms that, that we use for our staff members. And we realized the first year, our error was having too many forms that, that teachers had to use and try to make sense of. And so we tried to streamline the process, so not as much as visible to a teacher or an administrator at one time, but they can add on pieces as they're needed. So if I go to our friend John Sample, our teacher, I want you to notice a couple things. One is that John is in an area of the plan that requires a little bit more observation. So if you take a look at the second document that I gave you with the yellow stripe down the center, John is what's considered a year one or year two teacher. So he's either in his first or second year of teaching. If we take a look at that, I'm going to give you a quiz now. How many observations does a year one, year two teacher? I'm going to say John is a year one teacher. Based on our chart here, how many observations does John have to have? Three, correct. So if you look right here, three formal in-class observations, two have to have a pre-conference and all of them have to have a post-conference with an administrator. Okay? So we use this document to take a look at our teachers. Every three years, teachers have, this one right here, a formal in-class observation and a review of practice. The other two years, there's three informal observations and a review of practice. Review of practice is observing a teacher in something that might not be a traditional classroom setting. It could be observing a teacher in a grade level meeting, a department meeting, a planning and placement team meeting, mentoring a teacher, talking with a teacher about their planning process. We have a lot of them listed in the, in the teacher evaluation plan. So this guides our teachers and administrators to know how many times they're going to be observed. At any time in these two years where there are three shorter informal observations, if an administrator needs to see more about a teacher's practice, they can certainly then go into, do a full formal observation. Okay? So as I go here in the forums, what an administrator will do is, right here is an observation for a teacher. Some of our administrators are really good at doing this on their laps while they're in a classroom and entering some data. Others like to, what we call script a lesson, and then come back and add it into the document later. But what they're really doing here is looking at each of the four domains. And for each area, they can add evidence tied to a specific element on the document that I gave you, the Marzano document. So if an administrator sees a teacher, has their learning goals posted, is tracking student progress, is celebrating their success or not, they can click in here and a text box appears and they can add notes to themselves. So by the time the end of the year comes, there is information in every, each of the four domains. Not for every single one of those 60 elements, individual elements that you see on this sheet, across all the four domains. So it's a complex process, for sure. If you look here, there, this goes down, that was Domain One. Now I can show you Domain Two. And there are all the different places in Domain Two where they can add information. Same thing going forward with Domain Three and Domain Four. So there are places where they can add evidence based on what they saw. Teachers can also upload their own evidence of something that they've done in their classroom to illuminate the administrator's information a little bit better. So that's it. When we go to the main page again, if I go back to where our John Sample is, he has lots of places here. This is a form that he has to fill out prior to an administrator coming in. And remember, he has three of these observations. He has to fill out his plan for instruction that day. The evaluator fills out that form I just showed you and saves that in the system. The teacher then reflects on the observation. Okay, done with one. An administrator then can go to the top, add a supplemental form right here. And now I can add these three forms in again for the second observation. And then those populate in here, and so on. Mid-year assessment, the teacher does this part. The evaluator then has a conference with the teacher and then adds notes there. The teacher does a self-assessment at the end. The evaluator puts in all the information and does a summative rating. And then the teacher responds to that summative rating. So the pieces that we have on our plan are what are required by the, the guidelines and recommendations from the State Department of Education. We don't really have the option to omit any of these pieces. We can't say we don't feel like doing the mid-year review. We're not going to include that. We have to, that's part of the regulations. Same thing with the summative, reviews of practice, those kinds of things. Okay? So that's a quick glimpse. It's not meant to teach you how to use the program, but to see what it looks like behind the scenes. Our teachers see this type of screen. When an administrator pulls up a teacher, right now, we set it up, I'm in a training site. So we set it up with only my friend John Sample in here. An administrator, each of our administrators sees about 35 teachers. And they have to manage all 35. So it becomes very complex. I give our administrators a ton of credit for the work they're doing. Our teachers are working really well with this. We're trying to make this be something that merges in with what they're doing in classrooms anyway. And to not make them have to sit down and spend hours and hours and hours working on something on the evaluation plan, but to have that, this conversation and this work lead to improved instruction. So that's, that's our, that's our data management system for teacher evaluation. Any questions?
So does, it's very loud.
It's loud tonight.
I know, really.
Let me, let me get back. So questions from the board, Mrs. Lou McCormick, you're first, and then followed by Mr. Patton.
So just to clarify, so every teacher, every district across Connecticut is basically using a system like this?
Similar to this, yes.
Similar to this. And is this true with other states, or is this just a Connecticut thing?
No, whenever you get into a teacher evaluation system that's as complex as this, many of them have gone to some kind of a data management system. It's just too hard to do on paper and pencil and keep track of. But to answer your question, most of the states have gone to this type of teacher evaluation.
Mr. Patton.
If you could refresh my memory a little bit. For the, the year one, year two growth plan, which, you know, takes place over basically five years, right?
No, year, two years, the first two years.
First two years, okay.
Right, right.
So does that also, does that apply for just brand-new teachers in general? Or is it new teachers who are also new to Fairfield?
We have teachers new to Fairfield also participate in this, because we want our administrative team to work closely with those teachers to get familiar with their, their academic processes and strategies that they're using in their classroom. So we have a teacher who has 20 years of experience and comes here. We do have them participate in the year one version to really get to be known by the administrators and to get to know their administrators as well.
So they would have the three formal evaluations?
Correct.
And all that stuff, okay. Thank you.
Mrs. Maxon Canali.
Just a couple questions. First, on that form, I think it was interesting to see a different version. As you're looking at all those domains and all of the sub-questions, how, how is the evaluation process able to focus on the teacher's goal?
So I think what I need to make clear, if you're talking about this learning map and there's 60 elements on there, it is never the expectation that an administrator will find evidence for all 60 of those elements. There are too many. The requirement is to find evidence at least of some things in each of the four domains. So it might be more heavily weighted for Domain One instruction and you'll find perhaps less evidence in Domains Two, Three, and Four, which are on the back of the document. But it's not the intention that teachers will provide evidence or that administrators will see evidence in all 60.
Right, which I understand. But, but the teacher will have selected a goal that they believe is going to help them improve in their instructional practices. So how well does this form, I mean, I assume that's just part of the pre-conference?
It is. So what happens on that pre-observation plan is a teacher will, our, our document that we use for that actually says, what elements am I going to see in your instruction today? So if a teacher has chosen to use providing clear and, and learning goals and scales, element number one in DQ1, top left, they're going to say, I want you to look for that when you're in my classroom today. I want you to see how I, how I integrate that into my instruction.
And are you also finding that the instructional rounds are helping to give added focus to that?
Absolutely, yeah, absolutely. I think those go hand in hand. We're trying really hard in the district to align all of our thinking on these, not to say that teacher evaluation is separate from rounds, is separate from common core, is separate from evaluation, but to put them all, or assessment, put them all together and how they're linked together and how we use information interchangeably between them.
Okay, and then just one more question. Because I can't even imagine looking at that form with 35 to 40 names on it. True, I mean, obviously, a lot of the research now is talking about the value of the drop-in. Evaluation, what kind of time does any administrator have for that?
They're all managing to do that time. In a three-year cycle for, for our teachers, there's only one year that they have that full formal, only one formal observation, if they're an experienced teacher. The other two years are three informals. And informals are about 10 to 15 minutes. And our administrative team, I mean, they're, they're, it's hard. It's, it's hard to run a building and to find all the time to do this, but they're working their hardest to get that done.
Other questions from board members? Ms. Carnell followed, unless other board members, I'll give them a chance first before you take a second chance, but Ms. Carnell.
Thank you for that. And I think we started this, what feels like, months ago. You used the word administrators. Who are we talking about? Are they the curriculum leaders? Are they Dr. Boyce? Are they just the house, the headmasters? Who, if you can give a little more detail on that?
Most of the above. Our principals at the elementary schools work in conjunction with our curriculum leaders in language arts and mathematics, because those folks do co-evaluate as well. Our special education coordinators co-evaluate at the secondary level. Our housemasters, our principals at the middle school, our assistant principals at the middle school. Our headmasters do some walkthroughs at the high schools. Curriculum leaders help inform evaluation, as do special ed coordinators. So really, our whole administrative team is working on this process.
Yeah, please follow up.
So, thank you for that. The question is, do these evaluations get looked at by two administrators? Or is it solely the one administrator doing their evaluation?
So year one, or year one, year two teachers, I'd say almost, I'd say most, if not all, of those folks are having two administrators looking. You have a curriculum leader doing an observation and you have the building administrator. Part of our plan is that if a teacher only has one formal observation in a year, it has to be their building administrator doing that one formal. That's an agreement we had with our committee going forward. They want their building administrator to see their instruction and to be the one giving them feedback on their instruction. It doesn't mean, then, that a curriculum leader might, might join a grade level meeting, a grade three team meeting to go over units of study, you know, in, in mathematics or language arts. So that's where they contribute as well to the process. So we have all our administrators participating and our curriculum leaders are very strong in that as well.
Ms. Pitco would like to have a comment, and then I'll go to Mrs. Lou McCormick.
So approximately, how long does it take for a full cycle of one formal observation from the pre-conference all the way down to the post-conference?
You know, I'd have to talk to our administrators about that, but think about what they're doing. They're going to have a pre-conference with a teacher, which we're trying to keep to about 20 or 25 minutes. They're going to go in and observe a class, about at least 30 to 45 minutes. They're in the classroom observing. They have to come back and collect their thoughts, work on their feedback protocol that we do with teachers, and then they're meeting with teachers afterward. So I'd say a good two and a half hours per full observation.
When you say observation, you mean total evaluation or just?
For one observation. So if they're observing a teacher three times during the course of the year, as per our plan, you know, there's your, there's your seven and a half hours.
Mrs. Lou McCormick.
I forgot to ask about the goal setting. I forgot to ask about the goal setting. Just to clarify, when teachers set goals, how does that process work? Is it just one goal they set for the whole year, or is it a goal from each of the sections? Are there four different domains? Do they pick one goal for each domain, or how does that work exactly?
Okay, so there are four areas that they set goals. The 5% goal is rated to a school-wide goal. So what has the administrator set for their targets, and how is the teacher going to contribute towards that? So they're setting a target in that 5% area. The 10% area, they're using parent surveys, and in this case, for this year, we're using the school climate surveys. And the administrative team and the teachers identify two or three areas that they want to improve upon, and a teacher sets a target for something they want to do. For example, they want to improve parent communication, so they've decided their goal is going to be to have a newsletter go home once a month to the parents. So their evidence at the end of the year is going to be 10 newsletters by the end of the year, okay? So that's the 10% area. The 40% area, they're setting at least one area they want to improve. A lot of our teachers are doing one or two areas where they want to work on targets in the Marzano rubric, and then the indicators of academic growth and development. They're setting a student learning objective, which is a broad target, and then they're setting two measurable goals for their students to hit those targets.
Okay, so in total, it's actually like 10 different goals that they have for the year, spread amongst the four different?
It could be anywhere from six to, I think 10's a little high, but it could be anywhere from six to eight, somewhere around there, yeah.
Let's see, Mr. Patton followed by Mrs. Maxon Connolly.
I'm not sure, I'm not sure if this was ever asked before, but are teacher evaluations proprietary, or are they public?
They're not public.
They're not public, I didn't think so, okay.
Mrs. Maxon Connolly.
Forgot to ask this. How's it going with the now non-general ed classroom teachers? Because obviously, that was, we did that in phases, so how is that aspect of this going?
So, we've instituted in the 40% area only, a new rubric for them. These are folks who are in non-traditional teaching assignments, so it might be a dean or a school counselor or a speech and language pathologist. They have a separate rubric, which really highlights more what they do, which might be some adult learning. They might work with adults, they might work with families, they work with students in different contexts. So we've just rolled that out this year. We've done some work with our administrative team on that, so they're familiar with how to use that rubric. And we'll see, they're just finishing their goals now, so we'll see how that goes. But they're very appreciative of the fact that we're recognizing that some positions are not exactly the same as a classroom teacher, so we'll see how that goes.
Ms. Carnell.
Thank you. Do we have some sort of evaluation for the substitute teachers, or the long-term substitute teachers?
Not to the extent that we have here, but certainly, our administrative team, if there's a long-term sub, they're working, they're in the classroom. We have other teachers who work with our substitute teachers, especially the ones that are on long-term assignments. And we have a staff here that is, we're so lucky, we're so committed to their students' learning, that they're all pooling together to help any subs that are present in the district, but they're not part of this formal observation.
So in other words, we don't have any sort of form for subs?
Correct.
Because don't we typically use, you know, try to use the same pool of subs? So they're known in the school, and the school knows them?
Yeah, we have daily subs, and we have, schools can identify substitutes that they like to have in their building, or there might be a sub that didn't fit well in that building, and they'll let us know that. But our administrative team and our teachers do work very closely with our substitutes. They're not left to just hang dry for the time that they're with us.
So the feedback will be given somehow if?
Absolutely, absolutely.
Typically, the students.
Any other questions from board members on this topic? If not, any members of the public wish to address this topic at this time? Seeing nobody coming forward, thank you very much, Mrs. Leford. Before we move on to the next business item, our agenda is set, the order of it by our bylaws, and I take note that the superintendent's report is after the executive session, and the only thing left is the minutes. I suspect that some of you would like to hear the superintendent's comments, especially as they relate to the lockdown. So I'll ask for unanimous consent to move item eight, which is the superintendent's report, forward to immediately follow item 6C. If there's no objection to that, so ordered. And so we will have superintendent's report immediately after 6C, the discussion of program initiatives, and then we will deal with the balance of the agenda. So, the next item on the agenda is approval of the redistricting guidelines, the recommended motion that the Board of Education approves the guiding principles for redistricting as enclosed. Do I have a motion? Mrs. Gerber? Mrs. Maxon Connolly? I know that Mr. Patton would like to offer an immediate amendment to that, if I understand you correctly?
That is correct.
And so perhaps if, so that we could cut to the chase and know what it is that you want to perhaps have us discuss, if not this specific one. I'll call on you first.
Yeah, just pass, pass them on.
Take one and pass.
And there is, the press, or anybody wants an extra copy or two? So. I should just hand my copy down.
I'll share with you. It'll cost you an hour.
So I'd like to make a motion to amend item 5B, the approval of the redistricting guidelines, and change the motion so that it reads, recommended motion that the Board of Education approve the guiding principles for elementary school redistricting as submitted by the ad hoc redistricting committee, and that the Board accept these principles as the final reports of the committee.
You're making that as a motion?
That's the formal motion.
Is there a second? Ms. Pitco? So this is acting as an amendment, adding language, but essentially substituting this language for the language that is on the agenda. As the maker of the motion, please make your comments.
So basically, in mulling over the status of the redistricting committee and how we formally create and disband committees in our town and on the Board of Education following Robert's rules, the way things were written before, at least in my opinion, they weren't consistent, I guess is the word, enough with Robert's Rules of Order, and we didn't want to confuse the issue, and we wanted to stay consistent so that everything, from the formation of this committee to its end, would be correct according to the rules that we follow for governing. Does that make sense?
Okay, Mrs. Pitco is the secondor of the motion. Do you wish to make any comments on the amendment?
Not on this one.
Not on this one. I'll ask if the intent, it seems, is that the, that the second motion that's, well, item 6A, which is to disband the redistricting committee, that if the Board accepts the principles as the final report of the committee, and our bylaws call that once a committee gives us the final report, that that committee is effectively discharged from further work. Is that the intent of what you're trying to accomplish here?
That is the intent. There is not, Robert's rules is very vague in terms of, it's very specific in terms of how subcommittees or ad hoc committees are created, and the rules that they must follow as subcommittees, but it's very vague in terms of how those are dissolved, because normally, the rules are for a subcommittee, is that the committee is charged with a specific function, and when the committee makes a final report to that function, they've done their job, and then that's it. They're done, they have no more duties to perform, so the committee is effectively dissolved.
Okay, so we'll have discussion on whether to substitute this motion for the original motion, and then if it passes, or if it doesn't, we will then go to the main motion, which is the guiding principles. Comments from board members on the substituting this language for the existing language? Mrs. Maxon Connolly.
Just very quickly, and I know I should know this after four years, can we make friendly amendments to amendments?
Once, once, once the amendment is on the table, you can suggest a friendly amendment, but the amendment belongs to the Board, so the Board would have to agree by unanimous consent.
I don't think they would object to spelling principals LES.
Twice.
Twice.
With no objection from anybody?
I'm going to have the auto spell check correct on that one. That's all I'm saying.
With no objection, so ordered, so the two words, principles, are spelled correctly. Any other comments from board members on the amendment, which effectively replaces the existing motion with a new motion as distributed by Mr. Patton? Mr. Llewellyn.
I guess first I have a question, and based on the answer, I will, I have a follow-up comment, I think. So this language is effectively doing what B would have done otherwise, right?
6A?
Disbanding the committee, is that what would happen in 6, in 5, in?
6A.
6A, correct, thank you.
Yeah. Mr. Patton, I think that's what I asked, and you said yes?
Yes. So the purpose of adding this is, I guess I don't follow, if we've already got an agenda item on there. And I guess the question in the disbanding, I mean, we could accept or not accept, but in terms of disbanding, we are basically saying that we're foreclosing further discussion regardless of what the consultant comes back with. So if the consultant comes back and says we'll grab 1,000 less kids next year in the district, we've now disbanded, so we would have to form a new committee, and this committee would not want to be part of that process? I think that's multi-tiered.
Start anywhere you'd like.
Right. So to start from the, your first premise, I don't think, or I'll start from the second one. I don't think that the information that would come from the consultants, it certainly doesn't preclude this board from discussing that information, because that information, correct me if I'm wrong, Dr. Title, that information will come to us regardless, because we have to talk about racial imbalance. We will get that report, and it will say what it says.
That's correct. Anything would come, anything that comes out of the consultant's report with respect to racial imbalance, or any of the suggestions, would come to the full Board instead of the committee.
And to the general aspects of, you know, whether it's 6A, or doing it in one fell swoop here, the Robert's Rules aspect, basically, since the specifics are very vague in terms of dissolving a subcommittee, one interpretation is, you know, it needs a two-thirds vote to do it, and then that's pending if it's advanced notice or not. And I think the other aspects I remember reading were, since the formation of the committee is an official thing by the full Board, you almost need a, like a right-to-recind kind of thing, since the committee hadn't, you know, made a final report. So by making this the final report, it kind of gets the objective across, which is overall what logic has dictated, what the public has basically said, and then the general discussion so far, you know, in the subcommittee and at the full Board table, that this, the pocket of redistricting is, just at this point, it's not going to work, and, you know, we can argue that with a full motion more if this does not? But I don't think the question?
Let me clarify Robert's rules, if I could. As long as the motion to, that expresses the intent to do something, in this case, disband this committee, is part of the call of a meeting, it only requires a majority vote. If it were to be made without prior notice, then yes, it would require a two-thirds vote. So this motion, whether it is 6A that we act on, or we act on it through this addition of the words that Mr. Patton has suggested, would still only require a majority vote. And there are provisions in Robert's rules to discharge a committee from its assigned task, which can be done in a couple of instances, and one of those instances is when the Board that put the committee together is discussing an interim report, they could choose to say, okay, we've heard enough, we're ready to say, let's move on. So Mr. Patton's motion would be in order, this amendment would be in order, because it complies with Robert's rules from that perspective. Whether the Board wants to collapse these two ideas into one for purposes that Mr. Patton has already explained, that's up to the Board to discuss.
So I guess my question was this. If the consultant's report comes back, the Board will obviously get to see that. And if it comes back at 1,000 students less, left, and this Board has been disbanded, or this committee's been disbanded, what does that mean procedurally?
The Board then has the issue as a full Board to discuss. No action that we take can preclude a future Board or a current Board in the future from addressing any issue that comes forward based on information that has come to us. So in this instance, the ad hoc committee would no longer be in existence, but the full Board, acting as a full Board, would discuss the issue and choose what direction to go in.
Okay, that helps, thank you.
Any other comments from board members, questions from board members?
And this only relates to this change?
Ms. Carnell.
Right.
Okay, I'll wait, if it's only to this change.
Excuse me?
If it's only.
Okay. So, I'll restate the amendment. This is a voting item, so I will go to the public. The original wording, which is on the agenda, that is in the back table, that the Board of Education approved the guiding principles for elementary school redistricting as submitted by the ad hoc redistricting committee, and Mr. Patton has added the phrase, and that the Board accept these principles spelled correctly as the final report of the committee. Any member of the public wish to comment on this amendment to the motion? Seeing nobody coming forward, is the Board ready to act? You have it in front of you, so I won't read it again. All in favor of this, please raise your hand. Mr. Patton, Mrs. Gerber, Mr. Dwyer, Mr. Calabrese, Mrs. Pit, Ms. Pitco, Mrs. Maxon Connolly, all opposed? Mrs. Lou McCormick, Ms. Carnell, abstentions?
I don't have enough information.
Mr. Llewellyn, the motion passes?
Six to one.
Six to one. Thank you very much. So the main motion that is in front of us now, that I'll reread, that the Board of Education approved the guiding principles for elementary school redistricting as submitted by the ad hoc redistricting committee, and that the Board accept these principles as the final report of the committee. Do we have discussion on the guiding principles and/or considering this is a final report? Any comments from people on the main motion? Ms. Carnell.
I guess through the chair to Mr. Patton, I think you implied or said that we've heard enough. Maybe you can summarize what the Board has heard.
I don't know whether Mr. Patton used that phrase, I think I did use that phrase, so I don't know whether Mr. Patton used that phrase and could respond, but...
I'll let you both respond.
Patton, it's your motion, so do you wish to make any comments regarding it?
I don't, yeah, I don't think I used that exact phrase, but I guess the bottom line is, and there certainly is, you know, some logic that adheres to this, is that, you know, we had three meetings and one town hall-style meeting for the full Board, and the overall consent- and the overall consensus was, is that this was, you know, not going to solve, you know, pocket redistrict was not going to solve, you know, the overall space problem, and save us any money, overall, a great amount, and that, even before the committee was formed, that goes to a report by Mr. Cullen, who gave us the information on the two schools, Holland Hill and Mill Hill, where he gave us the exact amounts that we might save if we had just done renovations versus enhancing the, the core facilities and making them larger. And, so, that's kind of where my logic stems from.
So, so for me, if, if you want me to also comment, I think probably everybody at this table knows that I was not a fan of looking at pocket redistricting, and, and did not jump at the first opportunity when a couple of board members presented this idea, but as people said, well, I'll serve on the committee, or I'll do this, then as chair, while I didn't like the idea, I said, okay, we'll put a committee together. In my mind, it's been very clear that, that the committee, by putting the redistricting guiding principles forward, have said in their number one thing, maintain existing neighborhoods, that the public, through comments at board meetings, even the idea that at, at 9:30 in the morning meetings, there were 20 to 30-plus people at those committee meetings, that's unheard of, and then you go through a campaign, that five of us had an opportunity, well, nine of us actually had an opportunity to go through and listen to the public discuss redistricting. I, I think I've heard from the public that pocket redistricting is not something that Fairfield thinks is in its long-term best interest. So, from that perspective, I am ready to act. Other comments and questions from board members? Mrs. Lou McCormick?
To clarify, I just think that the implication that this board, or any members, had ever suggested that pocket redistricting was a recommendation, I think a lot, I think several people on the board were interested in understanding the underlying research and factors before making decisions on building, meaning how much capacity, what the population trends were, examining all the possibilities, you know, portables, permanent infrastructure, build-out, redistricting, these are all elements that are commonly considered before making a recommendation as to the specifications of a build-out, and I think that was the point of this whole exercise. But it did appear after the formation of the subcommittee, which initially had the mandate of hiring a consultant to do this review, which was then suddenly changed to a slightly different mandate, that in fact, the subcommittee took on a whole new purview, and this seems to be the culmination, because beyond being able to do this, I would agree that I'm not really sure what the subcommittee formation was for, if not just to gather information, to make a more informed decision on our infrastructure. So, I guess I do kind of sit on both sides of this issue, because I'm not sure what the subcommittee purpose was in hindsight, because of the changing mandate, beyond gathering the information so that we could make a more informed decision on kind of future, more prospective types of large decisions and investments we would have to make as a group. And secondly, I would say that with regards to these guiding principles, if we're discussing these guiding principles, I still, you know, I don't know if we have, are we approving these?
Yes. The motion is to approve these as guiding principles.
Yeah, so I still question our ability at this point to permanently define something so specific as 90% for the headroom capacity without having information that's probably being compiled by the consultant as we speak, to make a more informed decision based on more current information. So while I'm not opposed to the 90%, I just don't think that there's a need to necessarily rush that specification, since I'd be just as interested to hear what they would suggest would be an ideal overhead capacity, given their view of population trends in our district and in the area.
Mrs. Gerber raised her hand.
Yeah, well, just one thing, in terms of being able to hire a consultant, I mean, in our bylaws, it clearly states that committees cannot expend any funds, so that would include hiring a consultant, correct, which I believe is why the language was taken out?
Correct.
Okay, just wanted to clarify that, thanks.
Mrs. Maxon Cannelly?
A few points. First, through the chair to Dr. Title, or perhaps to either the two committee members, Mrs. Lou McCormick just referenced-
Can I interrupt just for one moment? Mr. Convertito was nice enough-
Or Mr. Convertito.
-to, to attend tonight, and so, since he's standing up and is quite visible, if, if you think that the former chair of that committee could be of any help to you, feel free to ask him as a resource.
If not simply because I can't resist the opportunity, I would love it if Mr. Convertito would come up and join us.
For, for those who are, maybe the inside joke is that Mr. Convertito availed himself as, as a member of the public to ask questions of the Board of Ed candidates, and so perhaps Mrs. Maxon Cannelly wants to return the favor. But please, continue, Mrs. Maxon Cannelly.
First, in, is the consultant recommending percentages for recommended headroom? Is that part of the charge to the consultant? Or isn't the consultant waiting for our charge?
Right. The consultant asked the committee for guiding principles, so that when the consultant determines what the, what plans to bring forward, the consultant would be able to bring forward plans that best met these. So he actually asked the committee to give them the top five. Obviously, the committee couldn't resist, it went to eight. And just so you know, we did, I was at the subcommittee meeting where the question came up, and so we actually asked the consultant, based on the dozen or more districts in Connecticut, what's the typical headroom capacity that's used out there that they've seen in other districts, and they responded that 85 to 90% is customary. So this would not be outside the norm to suggest that, but the consultant is actually interested in getting a hold of these, so when he looks at possible solutions to racial imbalance, he can determine which, if any, might meet these criteria.
So through the chair to Mr. Convertito, would you add any color commentary to that?
Please, please come forward.
Come on, you've been waiting.
And for the benefit of Fair TV, if you'd state your name.
John Convertito, 62 Worcester Road. Is color commentary asked to the headroom capacities?
Or anything else you've heard so far?
That's a loaded question.
I know it is.
My, my position is, is fairly simple. The redistricting committee was, was put together to follow its charge, which was to real, see if redistricting would more efficiently utilize assets at the elementary school level. In order to do that, you needed guidelines to decide how you were going to redistrict, if you could. In tandem with that, we had the racial imbalance issue come up, in which the consultant also said they needed guiding principles on redistricting, okay? That's where these eight came from. He actually asked us for five, we couldn't actually get it to five. So that's where the eight come from. As far as what you were discussing at the table, I have opinions about that, but I'm not so sure that this would be the proper form for me to voice them.
Can I clarify that while you couldn't resist eight, did the committee put these in ranked order, or are these random order?
These are in ranked order.
Random order?
Ranked.
Ranked.
Ranked order.
Priority order.
Priority.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, so then to follow up on that point, there's no reason not to, I mean, in fact, the consultant needs this number, we are determining this headroom number, this is not a number being brought to us by the consultant. So that point being brought up is not appropriate for what we're doing today. A few other things. In terms of the public and the history, I think what has been invaluable in terms of who, from whom we have heard in determining, making this a final vote, my issue is very clear in what has come out, and this is not just from the public, because while that can be as much an emotionally driven decision as it is based on their reality, we are also hearing from people removed from the Holland Hill community, that the needs of that as a 504 school are very clear, and I do not want this being out in the ether as being a question mark in terms of the size that we are looking to make that renovation, to be something that leaves any doubt in the other town bodies' minds regarding what our intent is. And anything I have heard, nothing has swayed me to that. Now, again, Mill Hill could be a, a future discussion, but for right now, we again need to set direction for the other town bodies. What we have heard, to me, has been very compelling and clear, in addition to all the history that's been provided by other town body, town body officials, that the need of Holland Hill is 504, and I would certainly hope through the chair to Dr. Title, that this is something we'll be seeing imminently in terms of moving on with the ed specs on that. So this isn't just about hearing from the public, this is hearing loud and clear from other town bodies as well, that the need in that community is clear, and moving one neighborhood to another neighborhood will not be an efficient use, since we have seen a pattern in our history of then that movement needing to be retracted, as we've had population movements, so.
Have you asked Dr. Title for a comment on the progress for the ed specs of Holland Hill?
And I was just about to ask through the chair to Dr. Title for a comment on the progress of the Holland Hill ed specs.
Is that called being the witness?
No, I thought that you already mentioned his name.
I heard it, yes. So the, while there are several paths to getting the full funding for Holland Hill that are possible, one, one part of that that's required is that the Board of Ed approve the ed specs for Holland Hill. I've said this somewhere in public before, so it's not news, that my plan is to bring forward a first reading of ed specs for Holland Hill at the December 8th meeting. Typically, the board doesn't approve those in one meeting, and that we would, we would expect approval at the January, first January meeting. At the present time, we are working on those ed specs, and so they will be ready for December 8th, and those ed specs will now conform to what's in the facilities plan as approved by the board, which includes Holland Hill as a 504. So that, you will see ed specs as a 504 on December 8th for first reading.
Does that answer your question?
Yes.
Okay. Other comments from board members? Mr. Llewellyn?
Yes, I'd like to make an amendment, please, to number five, headroom, the headroom comment, so it'll be ninety-
Oh, I'm sorry, to the guiding principles, not to the motion, but to the guiding principles.
Correct, my apologies. So, 90% shall be targeted. I think we should change word maintained to targeted. And I'll explain in a second.
Yeah, is there a second for that motion to amend, Ms. Carnell? So, the document would now read, headroom, headroom capacities, 90% shall be targeted, and not, and eliminate the word maintained.
Correct.
So, please make your comments.
Sure, I think a little reading of shall be maintained gives us a hard stop. It is a, a line in the sand versus shall be targeted, I think gives this district more flexibility to go to 91% or some other number. We have yet to receive the consultant's projections back, we don't know where he's going. I think, you know, I can probably support this if, if we're able to change that word to targeted, but I think drawing a hard line in the sand with such a void of information that's just so close to us in timing would not be prudent.
Ms. Carnell, do you wish to make any comments?
Through the chair to Dr. Title, do we have any idea when we'll be getting some update from the consult?
They know that we have to go forward to the State Board of Education in April with any, with an update or amendment to our racial imbalance plan. For that to happen, I need to give you a draft of such a plan, you know, no later than March. So we're looking to get something from them sometime in the January, February timeframe. So it's in that, in that range.
I'd like to ask a question of, of the board. The 85 to 90% figure that has been used by MGT and others have been used to define what is called functional capacity of a school. And is it your intent to say that 90% is the number that we'll use to define functional capacity? Is that what you're trying to get to?
No, I think, you know, when we look at the article that Cave just put out about declining enrollment across the entire state, albeit for, was it 16 towns, us not being one of them, I think that if that is the case, and we've seen declining population within our system, for us to draw a hard cut at, at a number of 90 when it's projected to drop into the future, so if you were to be at 91 or 92% temporarily, knowing that that particular school's been trending down over five years, isn't prudent. I think that, I'm not trying to define functional capacity at all, that's outside the scope of, I think, what we're even discussing here.
I don't know whether there was any discussion in the committee about that word, and whether, Mr. Patton, if you remember, or Mrs. Lou McCormick, you remember any conversation about whether it should be saying targeted versus maintained?
Well, I don't think I have any problem with the changing the-
Oh, no, but do you remember, did the committee have any discussion on this item?
Um, yeah.
In terms of the word?
Not specifically.
Mr. Convertito, as the chair, I see you-
I'm trying to say something, you're all-
Okay, I'm sorry, I, I thought you-
So, no, 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 I think was commenting. So, no, we, we did discuss, maintained, when we were discussing the aspect of what percentage, and the reason why we should, we kept the, and used the word maintained, is because that is the existing percentage, once we heard back from the consultants, about what they would normally recommend or what they use. So when we found out that for elementary schools, that they also use a 90% percentage, that's what we had before.
No, I'm, I'm not talking about the word, the 90%, but, but the word-
But that's why we kept the word maintained.
Okay. Mr. Convertito, was, is that your memory as well? You can hide in the back each time if you want.
Trying, I'm trying, I'm trying to get closer to the door. Yes, we did have discussion on maintained, and the reason we went back and left maintained there is because this is a guiding principle, it is not etched in stone, it's a guiding principle, so the flexibility is in the document from its title.
Okay, thank you. Other comments, Mr. Llewellyn, that you wish to make, or other board members wish to make?
Yeah, I think based on what Mr. Convertito says, no one should oppose to it being targeted if it's inherently in the title as well.
Right. So, let's see, who made the motion originally to, for the guiding principles?
(inaudible).
Yeah, you, you made the motion. Do you have any objection to that as a friendly amendment, changing the word maintained to targeted? I guess not. And who seconded it that? Do you have any objection to that? So by unanimous consent, we'll adopt that as a friendly amendment to change the word maintained to targeted? So ordered.
Thank you.
Any other comments on the guiding principles themselves relative to the wording of them? Mr. Patton?
Just one semantics thing that I thought I mentioned last month, in number four, phase out all temporary solutions, and we had the words portable, I think we, I think I mentioned that we should maybe make it portables, because it sounds odd there, or make it portable classrooms. Again, just word choice.
Any objection to adding an S? So ordered. So if there's no further conversation on the guiding principles, is there any conversation about the concept of considering this the final report, whose effect would be to have the redistricting committee go out of business, and then if any further discussion on redistricting has to occur, then it would occur in front of the full board? Any comments on that as a concept? This will mean that item six A would be moot, and we wouldn't address it. Any comments from the board on that? Seeing none. So, for the recommended motion as it's been amended, that the Board of Education approved the guiding principles for elementary school redistricting as submitted by the ad hoc redistricting committee, and that the board accept these principles as the final report of the committee, do we have members of the public that wish to come forward to make a comment on the motion? Please state your name and address. Please state your name and address.
Neil Fink, you probably all know where I live now, but seventy Crest Terrace. I just have one comment, since Mr. Convertito suggested that this was actually a ranked list, and we also heard that the consultant actually asked for five principles and not eight principles. It concerns me that maintained district guidelines for class size is number six on the list, and I would suggest that you consider reordering this list to put district guidelines for class size towards the top, if not number one, on this list. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Other members of the public that wish to come forward to comment on the motion prior to taking action on it? Okay, back to the Board. Any further discussion among the Board members? Mrs. Maxon Cannelly?
Just to put that out there, I actually think Mr. Fink makes a really good point. Does it make sense topically as an outline for it to be a B under five? Since we're talking about size, since we're talking about numbers, this is a numbers issue, so it's not just the overhead capacity of the building, but also the micro level of the classrooms. I'm-
I have no objection to that, but any other Board members want to make a comment on the suggestion, yes?
Well, I guess just one question, since he's back now through the chair to Dr. Title. Since the committee came up with eight suggestions, but the consultants had requested five, does that mean that the consultants will not, do not want eight? Will they say, "We will only take the top five," or would they actually take all eight?
No, actually, it works because they're in priority order, so that-
Right, so they would just take the top five, then?
No, they would look at all of them, but they realize which ones are more important than, than others, so.
Okay, because that's the discussion that we're having, because a member of the public got up and suggested that number six should actually-
Look, they'll look at all of them. If the Board passes all of them, they'll look at all of them. And they know they're in priority order, so I can tell them that.
Right, but I think that was the concern, that since they are in priority order, that perhaps some of the higher numbers wouldn't be taken as seriously, so would it make sense to try to combine, have six be part of five, just to ensure that they understood that that was a concern? I guess that's just-
Yeah, that's, that's a tactical point. I mean, I think we can make that five B if you want, or you can leave it as six. It's not gonna, it's not gonna make any substantive difference. So, you know, they asked for five, they could've asked for six, they could, you know, it's, they want to get a sense of the Board's priorities before they put anything together. They just don't want to bring something forward that is just a non-starter. And so this will do the trick. Nothing would be ignored on here, but they would get a sense of what, what's most important. So it doesn't really matter whether you make it five A and B, or you leave it as six, you know, they'll look at the whole document.
Does the Board have a preference? All eight will be considered, because at the end of the day, we pay the consultant to consider all eight.
That's, that's a more blunt way to put it.
Okay, is the Board ready for action on the recommended motion? That the Board of Education approve the guiding principles for elementary school redistricting as submitted by the ad hoc redistricting committee, and that the Board accept these principles as the final report of the committee? All in favor, please raise your hand. Unanimous. Thank you very much.
Do you need a formal motion to strike six?
That's a good question.
A, I guess it is?
I think 6A is a moot point, and we just move, we don't act on it.
Can we do that, if it's on the agenda? We probably have to act on it one way or the other.
Okay. Put a motion forward to-
Motion to-
Postpone indefinitely item 6A.
I'll make the motion.
Move. Do I have a second? Mrs. Lou McCormick, any conversation on that? All in favor, please raise your hand. Postponed indefinitely, thank you very much. Six B, first quarter financial report, Mrs. Monsel.
Actually, I think this report will be a good introduction to the new Board members, because since it is the first quarter, it is so preliminary that it'll, it'll give you a good introduction, a good, slow introduction into the finances, because there's so many, so much more that's going to unfold in the next nine months beyond this quarter. I'm just going to highlight what we do know, what happened this first quarter, and what's yet to be determined. We did add ten, a net ten point nine certified teaching positions due to the distribution of elementary students in class size, and the course enrollment patterns that we, we Those additional costs will be offset by an additional eight retirees and turnover, so there'll be no significant balance at the end of the year like we experienced last Under benefits, our contribution to the town pension will be approximately seventy-eight thousand dollars over budget, because the consultant had changed the mortality tables after the Board voted on the pension number. So between those two categories, that's eighty-one percent of our budget, that's where all the action is, and those are the highlights of those two sections. Pupil Services, right now, shows a negative one point four million dollar balance. That will be offset by excess cost, which is still unknown. December first, Pupil Services will file the, the excess cost numbers with the state, and we'll get a better idea after that of what we'll, what we'll get, but it'll be adjusted again in March, so that won't be finalized until end, later in the year. Maintenance operations and transportation's another big unknown. We haven't had snow, we haven't, you know, there's, there's all kinds of things that can impact that budget, repairs and maintenance, things that happened. Twenty-five percent of this section of the budget is for utilities. We do know that our utility rates were budgeted at the contractual rates for the entire year. So, so at least that aspect of it is a given. The distribution and transportation pieces of the, the rates are not bid, so that's, there's a little bit of an unknown there, and of course, usage. So those, that in a nutshell is what we know so far in the first quarter.
Questions for Ms. Monsel, Mr. Llewellyn, followed by Mr. Patton?
Thank you. So if we start at the top in the summary, we say that there are an additional eight retirees. So does that mean we went from twenty-two to thirty, or are those eight included in the prior twenty-two?
No, the eight are additional. We budgeted fourteen, we, total of twenty-two.
Okay, so that, that eight is included in the twenty-two, it's not that we had thirty?
Correct.
Correct, thank you. Just because it said additional, we'd already talked about that, I just want to make sure, good.
Right, we budgeted fourteen, we actuals twenty-two, that's how it still is.
Perfect, thank you. If we look at the Effective School Solutions, that is something that is being put into line three oh three-
Well, it may be helpful to, to the two Board members if you give them a reference as where you're talking, so that they can-
Sure.
Well, for all of us, but yes.
Pupil Personal Services, second page, second paragraph, third line, Effective School Solutions, which is, pupil services contracted with Effective School Solutions. The increased services allow us to retain students in district who would otherwise be outplaced, and has allowed us to start returning outplaced students to the district. Accordingly, there's a budget transfer from the out-of-district tuition account to the pupil personal services professional consultant account. So that is now up in, if now we're going to, basically the front of the last page, line three oh three, which is also under pupil personal services. So that line is increasing from nine hundred and sixty-eight to a million five sixty-three, so the increase of almost six hundred thousand dollars, is that solely attributable to that program?
Yes. You'll see down lower, under the tuition-
I saw that, yep.
Line.
Okay, so that's what it all is, though.
Right.
Okay, and then, that's also our legal expenses?
I'm sorry?
Is that, that's also our legal expenses now, on that line three oh three?
No, not in personnel expenses, it's under support.
Line number, sorry?
Under support expenses.
What line number?
Page two.
Uh-huh.
Support expenses, the second category on that page.
Could you reference the actual number?
Professional Technical Services, three oh five?
Three oh five, no, no, no.
No, it's not.
Um.
I think that's where it was.
Yes, three oh five.
No, but, so that's our budget? It's the three forty-eight? I thought you increased it. So you were going to break out, at the last meeting, you were going to break out for us, I thought you had said, legal services, to wherever it was, as a separate, whether it be a three oh five B, so that we can kind of track that one, because it's such a big number? And now it's, it's lumped in with other things, whereas before it was on its own?
I thought what we said was, we would give you a report, which we did, on how they were actually expended. You are asking that we break them out on this report?
Well, I think it would be easier if we had them here as well, just so we can kind of track that, because that's a number that we'll be interested to watch over the course of the fiscal year, given where we were on it last year.
I'll see what I can do, it would mean I would have to categorize it separately.
And, and we've, at the risk of-
Okay, then you-
We've had this discussion before as to-
We have.
What level of detail the quarterly report should be at. This is the level of detail that a prior Board by policy said is what is required, and so if we want to go into more detail, then, then as a Board, we ought to talk about what level of detail, in addition to just this line, is appropriate.
Sure, and I'm not sure if that was by policy, I think it was probably by practice.
But maybe by practice, correct.
And then, I guess, then if that's, if it requires extra work, let's not do that, let's just break it out in the narrative each time for us, if we could, please.
Yeah, I'm thinking that if there's any unusual activity anywhere in here, just leave legal services aside, but if there's a subcategory of any of these that's causing us heartache, we could just put that in the narrative, and say, "This one's trending higher." Well, it could be in utilities, could be in heat, could be in whatever it is. So we don't have to be specific about that particular one, that's probably the easiest way for us to do it.
Yeah.
If we don't, if you don't see it in there, then it means that we're trending fine with it.
Okay. Okay, thank you. And then back to the Effective School Solutions. So is this something that is already occurred, did this start in September, or is this something that we're making a budget move because it's coming toward us? How many folks is it affecting?
It started, Andrea can come on up and talk through that a little bit, but that's, that's already happening.
So that was effective-
Effective, beginning of school, yeah.
Yes, we moved, as you know, we've been talking about this, the issue of students at our high schools experiencing significant mental health concerns for the past couple of years. And so, at this time last year, preparing for the budget, we were still concerned about it, but we really didn't have or hadn't seen something we thought would be effective to address it, and so we continued to budget in the tuition line. Throughout the course of last year, we began, we continued our search for the kinds of supports and services for this group of students, to try to prevent students from having to leave our high schools, and to be able to meet their mental health care needs while they continued to attend to their academic programs, and, and extracurricular, co-curricular programs at the high schools. And we began talking to Effective School Solutions late in the spring of last year, we worked with them, we sent a team to visit schools that they were working in, public, other public high schools in similar communities, primarily in New Jersey, and we sent teams out to visit those schools, to speak to their counterparts, and came back with really positive, both data that they had shared about students in those schools, but also about the impact having that level of care available in the schools provided, from a, the perspective of kind of early intervention, before kids were really in difficulty, being able to intervene early. And so we moved forward with that, and contracted with Effective School Solutions to provide us with forty-five seats, basically, to provide an intensive level of therapeutic assistance in the school, to keep the kids with us. And in order to do that, we moved money from the tuition line to the consulting line to provide those services in our high schools. And so we have at each high school eighteen seats, and nine seats at the Walter Fitzgerald campus, for an even higher level of care, because of the smaller environment of Walter Fitzgerald. And currently, we have students who have been referred to, assessed, and are participating that, in those services. The preliminary, preliminary data is excellent. We have not placed anyone through the PPT out in the first twenty-five, thirty percent of the school year, which is interesting. If you remember, a couple of years ago, at this time of year is when I started talking to you about a different trend. We've gotten really positive feedback from the families and from the kids. We're about to do our first kind of survey of the people participating, parents and students, to get feedback from them, but the data is optimistic at this point. It's a startup, so we don't have anything, you know, but things are looking good, things are trending for these students in the right direction. So we're very pleased with the initial startup.
And is the group out of New Jersey coming here to Fairfield each day, or are there-
They're, they provide clinical supervision and support, they provide, they have, we have some staff of theirs that are in our schools. We have a regional director who's providing kind of clinical supervision on the ground, and then a clinical team in New Jersey that's working with that clinical team to monitor progress, suggest further treatment, further issues for the individual kids and families.
And is it both their therapeutic day program and the wraparound, or are we using-
It's not a therapeutic day program in the sense, it's a constellation of services. The kids still attend their classes, their academic classes, music, art, sports, but within the school, they have access to a primary therapist, they do some, a lot of group therapy, and then they also work with families, and provide family support after school hours, and then a parent education and support group as well.
Okay, hey, thank you very much.
Mr. Patton, do you mind if, Mrs. Maxon Cannelly follows, follow up?
Yeah, I'm just a quick follow up. Obviously, you've only mentioned the high school, and I can't imagine that there aren't issues elementary school and middle school. If they're not working with them, do they in any way provide professional development or mentoring to help our own staff better meet their needs, or is, is there any kind of filtering down of that? They, they have offered to provide, and, and part of our contract is they will provide some professional development. I wasn't prepared, we don't have enough data on the table for me to move this model downward yet. Obviously, if a little later on in the year, or if this really proves to be a model that's effective, I'd be looking for this, not for next school year at the middle level, but for the following. I needed more data, I wasn't, I'm just not, I need to see more. It's too early to tell. Thank you.
Mr. Patton?
You're excused for me.
Yeah.
Question from Ms. Monsel. The fixed charges for contributing to the pension fund, so that's seventy-eight thousand, seventy-eight thousand dollars of extra unforeseen, according to what we budgeted for previously, correct?
Correct.
So, maybe you don't have an answer for it, but could we assume that the town side has a similar percentage that they, that they didn't calculate as well, or was that something that we-
No, I don't think so, because our, our budget process starts so much sooner. I think they, they caught it in time, because they, you know, you approved it on January, whatever the date was.
January, right.
I think that was about the time it came out, so, I mean, we just missed it.
So we basically knew that we were going to have this issue kind of ahead of time?
In the spring.
After we approved- After we approved the budget, but before the town approved it.
Gotcha, okay.
Other comments or questions for the board? If not, we'll move on to, uh, item six C, discussion of twenty sixteen, seventeen program initiatives and budget implications, and Dr. Tittle, I think you have some staff joining you?
Yeah, I'll tee this up, then I'll have some staff just talk through this pretty quickly, I'm gonna presume you've read the enclosure. So, you may recall, as part of our budget development process, that, um, if we had, um, items under consideration for the sixteen, seventeen budget that were significant in terms of, uh, costs or program enhancements, um, that we would bring these forward in November, we did this last year. Uh, the only item at that time that we brought forward was world language. The board had a discussion about world language, um, which then made its way into the budget. But this year, we started expanding that, so you could get a, a look into what's on the table. Because it's listed here, doesn't mean it's definitely making it into the budget, we're still formulating the budget. Um, some of these numbers are, could be a little scary, high. But I think this was a chance for us to get some feedback from you about these concepts, knowing that some of them may not make it because of, uh, other factors in the budget, or maybe they will all make it, we're still in the development process, so. This is not a done deal, but, um, things that are on the table. And I do wanna point out that where we could, we tried to tie them back to a, the district improvement plan. And so, um, that's, that's what the overview is. So I'm gonna ask, uh, Mr. Cummings and, um, Dr. Boyce to start on number one, which is text instructional materials, and then, um, Karen Parks will talk about technology.
The first item listed under, um, textbooks is the remaining purchase of the world language textbooks. Last year, the board approved the, um, new world language curriculum, and we purchased textbooks in Latin, Spanish, and French for levels ten and twenty. We would like to complete the purchase of those languages for levels, um, thirty and forty this year, and that will complete the world language textbooks, uh, purchased. This year, we will be presenting the revised social studies curriculum K through twelve in, um, May, and we have estimated, um, the cost of textbooks and resource materials, K twelve for that curriculum, and that is in the second bullet. I will note that since that, that particular, um, program area was never brought to the board in the past as a K twelve program, the textbooks were purchased piecemeal, and so there's a range of ages of, um, textbooks, and, um, some are very much in need of, of replacement. The middle school program will be changing considerably in social studies, and we really need more resources there as well. And Mr. Cummings, I'll have you address the last bullet there.
Sure, thank you, good evening. Finally, uh, the last bullet on that first page, the concern we have at the elementary level, particularly in the, uh, K two, um, pre-K two, I should say, is the concerns around our current ability to correctly identify and remediate concerns around phonemic awareness, some of the fundamental skills that we wanna include in our literacy program. Uh, a number of years ago, some implementation materials, some, some remediation materials were bought, but it was an inadequate level, um, for need, and by inadequate, I mean essentially one, one, uh, item was bought per school. We really need to look at implementing one per classroom. Um, we also need then, with the purchase of those materials, to support our teachers um, through, uh, the requisite professional development and support for them to be able to implement and use those materials effectively in their instruction.
I think we'll go through all of them, and then we'll just open it up for questions, and.
On number two, on program assessment, you heard our, um, students talk about the fact that we gave the school day PSAT to grade, um, ten and eleven students this year. Um, we would like to obviously continue to do that for, for a couple reasons. It does give us very good standardized data that we can help students instructionally. It also helps prepare students for the, um, SAT in grade eleven, which is now the state required test. In addition, there, we became aware of a pre-PSAT test, which the college board calls PSAT eight-nine, which we are considering giving to our ninth grade students, because we don't have any standardized tests um, after grade eight until the required, um, state test in grade eleven. And so that would be given on the same day, that's a school day test, and, um, that's listed there. Middle school music. Um, as you know, we have a music program, um, for our students, um, K through eight, and in middle school, um, we give students the option of taking chorus, orchestra band, or a general music chorus, which is a keyboarding class. Last spring, uh, the middle school principals and I began to really take a close look at that keyboarding class, because we noticed a few things about it. One was, because the staffing, um, really wasn't where it needed to be to offer it three times a week, which is what, it alternates, music alternates with PE in the middle school. Um, in some middle schools, we're offering it twice a week, some are offering it for a semester, so we wanted to standardize the offering of that three times a week, and that's resulting in the request for a point four increase in staffing in music. The second thing is, we, we had a, a good conversation with Sarah Hofer, who's our music coordinator, um, and we really want to, as much as possible, keep students in band, chorus, and orchestra in middle school. But what's happening, and you know this, if, if you have your own middle school children, is sometimes when they get to be seventh or eighth grade, they, their interests shift, or, um, one of their friends decides they don't wanna do band anymore, and so, five of them don't wanna do band anymore, and so they go into the keyboarding class, but we're limited because of the number of keyboards available to us. And so some students were actually taking a study hall instead of music. The other issue that came up is that the keyboards, which we started to purchase, I think about, uh, six years ago, I believe, it was rolled in over three years. The keyboards and the system that we use with those keyboards are no longer being produced by Yamaha, so we can no longer replace the keyboards, and repairing them has become expensive. The program that we're using in that class is very limited, all of the keyboards connect into one station, so there's, there's no way for the students to do different things, it's driven by whatever the teacher um, is doing at the control panel. So what the music department is proposing is that we adopt, um, a program very similar to what the high school uses in the piano keyboard, uh, class, where we would, um, buy keyboards, where each keyboard would plug into its own computer, and we would use the same software, the Piano Suite Premier that's used in the high school class, and actually allow students to dive more deeply into composing in theory, and allow them to progress at their own level. So that's the, um, equipment and software that's listed, um, in the first table.
Uh, the fourth item is, uh, technology. Uh, as you know, um, in the past, we've, you've seen our technology plans, and in those plans, we attempt to outline, um, what specific technology hardware each classroom needs to be able to support um, the curriculum and, and instruction. Um, what has recently, uh, surfaced from the teachers is that they really feel there's a, a need for document cameras, which are, um, a device that allows a teacher to project a paper from a student or anyone, and project it up in front of the class, and it allows the teacher or students to come and write on that document, point things out about that document, so it provides an opportunity for sharing writing samples, historical documents, artwork, things that, um, enable, uh, discussion in the classroom, so kids can give each other feedback, they can analyze materials, and, um, we looked at multiple different types of technology to support that, um, strategy, and it seems that document cameras would work best, there is a very, um, teachers have expressed a strong need for those, so, uh, it's not something that we currently have for all classrooms, so we're beginning to try to, um, fill the need by starting with, um, ten at each school, and each year adding to that until the classrooms who need them are, have them to, uh, support instruction.
Finally, the last item is the, um, plan to move forward with implementing elementary world language. You can see in the table provided, um, on page four of the memo, the full cost for K three implementation, um, again pointing out that, um, under this plan that was originally proposed last year, um, the, set grades two and three would receive instruction for twenty-five minutes, um, twice during the five-day rotation. K one will receive instruction once for twenty-five minutes during the five-day rotation. In light of the needs that we're seeing, is, we've just enumerated some of them, and those are just the ones, again, in the instructional division this year in the budget. It's our thought going forward that next year, we should look to implement grade three, um, and then in, uh, the following year, um, finish the implementation with the K two, um, uh, implementation of those grades.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, any final, uh, comments that you wanna make, or write to the board?
Write, write to the board.
Questions or comments from board members on, uh,
Anything.
this item?
Just a discussion item only.
It's a discussion item only, these will either find their way into the budget or won't, depending on the latest surprise that staff get. Mrs. Maxen-Cannelli?
Um, yes, a few questions. Going backwards, um, number four with the technology to, through the chair to Mrs. Parks. Does the, I'm not familiar with document cameras, um, does the screen on which it is being projected matter, because I know the schools have different, you know, whether it's just a screen, whether it is a smart board, so is that gonna, obviously it'd be a shame to get something that only works with smart boards, and there aren't enough there, and then they're wasted technology, um, so.
Project it anywhere you want, so it's not, it doesn't, it's not part of the interactive smartboard, so it's really just taking the document that's in front of you, projecting it up, you can see someone write on it. Sort of like the overhead projector.
That's what I was about to ask.
If you start mentioning the word film strip, I'm gonna get nervous.
Well, and so then I have to ask, how is it different?
Well, it's not really significantly different, uh, but you could, well, you wanna add to that? You could use an electronic document as well.
The, one of the key differences is, um, with a overhead, the old overhead projector, you could take a student work and project it on. What the document camera allows you to do, in addition to that, is to, as Ms. Parks said, you can take, um, in our class, you could take a, a, a painting and project it up, and the students can analyze it, you can project, it, it actually takes the image, rather than the light coming through the image, it takes the image and reverses it and puts it up. So, um, again, in social studies, some of the work that we're gonna be doing, and have been doing, is around, um, uh, primary documents. Teacher could take the primary document, project it up, and they can analyze it that way as well. So you don't need the translucence of the document to, in order to project it.
Ms. Pitko?
So are there already some, in some of the schools, and people know how to use them, or is this like a professional one that they'll have to learn how to use the document camera?
No, there are, there are some, and teachers have found them extremely effective, and they're actually, yeah, they're actually using them so frequently in their classroom that they can't share it out, so, um, that's, and you know, some content areas, I think, initially, it, for language arts and writing and social studies, they seem to be using them more frequently, but there's, there's applications in science, in math, so, um, so we're thinking that we should start them in the library, for example, with ten, teacher could sign them out, but as, uh, we really think that as teachers get used to them in the classroom, they're going to wanna keep it in their own classroom, but that's how we'll start distributing them across the schools.
Okay.
Mrs. Maxen-Cannelli?
Yep, um, and then going to number three regarding the middle school music. In terms of this type of, um, an expenditure, we've been talking about some form of audit or examination of the middle school, um, extra, you know, the, the courses that they are taking. I assume that in looking at this and looking to commit to something like this, that you don't see this course as being something that could, in a year or two years, be, well, we've come up with something different to replace it?
No, and I've, I've worked very closely with Sarah Hofer, the, the coordinator. I, I believe very strongly that music should be required of our middle school students. I think we, we're seeing an increase in music enrollment in the high school as well, which I, I think is wonderful, and we have a beautiful music program, it's obvious that our, the efforts pay off. But the other thing that happens in the middle school is some students just don't wanna be in the band anymore, you know, for various reasons, or they don't wanna sing anymore. And so I think a good, um, course such as this, which is in a sense a general music course, but it's really geared toward keyboarding and music theory, piano keyboarding, um, and music theory, is going to be something that translate into, translates into a high school course for them, and keeps them involved in music. But I did, we did spend a lot of time, the middle school principals and I, talking about this with Sarah, to be sure that this was the direction that the music department felt we should be going in, and they believe very strongly it is.
I mean, again, I was not suggesting that we remove a music course, I just wanted to make sure that this was the nature of the course that would be wanted, so, um, just curious about that. Um, then back to number two, this is just a comment, um, through the chair to Dr. Tittle. Uh, one thing I thought that was, um, interesting to hear was when our student reports were talking about the time that the ninth graders spent, um, in those assemblies, in those conversations, and obviously when those are well done, a day like the PSAT day presents a unique opportunity to not be pulling them away from class time, and yet still engaging them in a way that's very important in other ways, so, you know, I just hope, you know, there's definitely an examination of how worthwhile that test is, and the information that that test provides for us, and that, that outweighs the benefit of, you know, the way that it was spent now, because I certainly heard some positive comments about it, so.
Right, no, and that's, you've hit it exactly, that's the balancing act, and that's why it's listed as under consideration. Because we're trying to weigh, um, the alternative use of the time with ninth graders versus the academic results we'd get from this assessment. So that's what, the, the way, the way it is right now, more than the cost, actually. Uh, the reason the whole thing has to be in here is that, um, and we do have in the, in the district improvement plan, the PSAT is listed under the, uh, one of our assessments, so this is keeping with that. But we approved that district improvement plan after the budget was done. So we have to absorb that cost this year, but next year, we need to start budgeting for it. So the eighteen, eight forty is sort of a given, the question mark is really the sixty-four hundred, and it really is more a matter probably of, what's the best use of our time? And that's not resolved a hundred percent, but we wanted to signal that it could happen.
And then just one last point, um, I was saving this for last, I wanted to do more neutral, positive things. Um, I have to admit, I'm disappointed to not see a math elementary school textbook here, um, whether in an online version or anything else. We approved this curriculum years ago. Annually, we are hearing that this is something that we're waiting for, and, um, I'm disappointed to not see that, I, I think it's long overdue. And unless I can hear that, we're hearing plenty about parents wanting to, you know, be able to help more, and that a series of worksheets isn't working. And I just have a very hard time believing, I'm open to believing, um, but I have a hard time believing that at this point in time, that there is nothing out there that can support what we are doing in the classroom, that gives the teachers the freedom to have this resource, and therefore also have that go to children, uh, go home with children, excuse me, to their parents. Um, so, I don't know if this is something that you're prepared to speak to now, um, I.
No, we, we knew it was coming.
Okay.
And, um, I'll, I'll let Mike talk about it, but I will say that, you know, that still can end up in this budget, we're just not ready at this moment, but.
We're just not ready at this moment, but there's going to be more work done on that. So, but I want, I want Mike, as he's new, and I wanted to give him a chance to get his feet on the ground with this whole issue before pushing it one way or the other. So, we had a feeling this might come up.
Yeah, and I appreciate you asking the question. We are looking at, and we're going to be forming a textbook search committee, as it were, to begin work probably right after the holiday and move relatively quickly in January, February, so that we'll be able to prepare for, I believe in March, there is a review of the math curriculum, we would be able to discuss it, April? We'll be able to discuss it at that point. As Dr. Tittle said, we may have to move things within the budget when we get to that point, and it would depend on, A, what we find, and B, how we decide to implement it. As we've said in the past, as others have said in the past, there's not opposition to the idea of the textbook, as you mentioned, but it really is the idea of finding a right one, and we feel right now is the time to go back, as you've stated, and recommit to the search.
If I can ask, what kind of numbers are we talking about for a textbook purchase for elementary school math for the grades, rough?
It would, it would depend on the, you know, often in the elementary math textbook selection, the K2 textbooks tend to be consumables. You know, the traditional workbook page that kids either rip out or bring home and work on one at a time. Those, I heard a dollar amount the other day, that's roughly an $80,000 a year investment for K2 per year.
Per grade.
Per grade. Three, five would, would be, you know, you're talking, right now textbooks being 50 to 60 to 70 dollars, multiplied by the number of kids, and that's...
I was kind of hoping you'd do the multiplication.
Well, I would tell you this...
It's a math question.
Yeah.
Or estimating.
We have 42 sections of fifth grade next year, for example, and roughly there's, I don't remember the exact number of fifth graders, but say 42 times 20, we have roughly about 800 students in eighth, in fifth grade next year. If we have to spend 70 dollars per textbook, you know, or 60 dollars per textbook, we're talking almost $50,000 just for the grade five. Again, those though would be hard, hardbound books that would have permanence.
That gives me an idea, thank you.
I just want to comment on the textbook thing, just in general, but...
Please do.
So, when we redid the, the way we do curriculum development, and we started doing it at a, this is a K12 level, we had been doing it, first of all, I've been done completely piecemeal, and then we've been working our way up to K to 12, and, you know, when you do that, the first time you put that in, there's a big number behind it, because you're buying resources for K to 12 all at once. And, you know, you can think about sort of phasing that in, but you also have to understand that lined up right behind this is science, K to 12. So, ideally, you'd like to get this number, even though the social studies number is big, you almost don't want to have to phase that in, because then the next year, you're looking at phasing in the second half of it, plus you got all science behind it. We'd be better off trying to get the social studies in place, you know, and establish that as the textbook number. So, when science comes along, you're not going to have to necessarily do a lot of maneuvering with the, with the budget. So, we're just cognizant of, these are very large numbers, until we had a little more clarity on the math, we didn't want to, you know, commit to it, but it very well could make its, its way in here.
Mrs. Garber.
Yeah, well, for Dr. Boyce, with the eighth grade, the keyboarding, that's, thank you, that's something that definitely I've heard a lot about from parents of middle school students, and having a middle schooler myself, who I'm twisting her arm to take music still, I think that's a great additional option. I guess one question I had is, will this require any kind of change to the curriculum, any altering of it, since now it will be all, three days at all schools, or is it just going to make it more robust, but still within the parameters of what has been approved?
The latter. The curriculum, as it's written, will, we can, we will be able to deliver that curriculum through this, as I've described it. The instruments and so on aren't going to impact the curriculum. The curriculum talks about keyboarding skills, piano skills, theory at, at the middle school level, composition, music composition, so we're doing, still delivering the same curriculum. And it, the teachers are very excited about this, because it is far more, far more robust. Now, we offer this course in grades six, seven, and eight, and part of what happens now is a student who's been taking this keyboarding class in sixth grade could be in an eighth grade with a student who's taking it for the first time, and the teacher really has no level with, ability with the current system to give a different level of instruction to somebody who's done it for three years or one year. And this new system will allow the teachers to do that.
Okay, thank you. And then, I'm sorry, another question I had was about the social studies, the textbooks. So, here it says, the age of books varied from 16 years to six years, and I understand that's because the curriculum has been approved at different times, and now we're looking at one big chunk. But, just in terms of, and I know it's not easy to say, but is there some kind of shelf life for a history textbook, just in terms of, you know, how, how quickly do they become out of date? And I guess, are there other options? You know, would it make sense to have? And I'm assuming that some of these do have online components, but just in terms of, you know, spending, this is a really large number, and, and just are there other ways, which I'm sure you've looked into, but just in terms of not having quite the same expense, since sometimes textbooks can go out of date fairly quickly, especially with a topic like social studies.
Right, and you know, the fact that we're using a 1999 textbook in U.S. history, I think is, is a, is an issue. You know, one of the conversations I've had with the curriculum leaders is something that you just referred to, is could we use an online, could we give students online access to the textbooks and not buy a textbook for every student? And I have felt from past conversations with the board, that you very much wanted us to issue a textbook to every student, and so when we calculate this, that's what we base it on.
Right.
There really, there are some areas where they can use online resources, for example, in the civics classes, which are semester classes, but they, they really do feel like they need to have a textbook in some, either, you know, an actual physical textbook or the online version of the textbook in every one of these courses. And so, that's how we arrived at this. Now, I, you know, I did ask for a prioritized list, because there are some, like, for example, the board approved the AP Psychology textbook not very long ago, so we wouldn't be buying a new AP Psychology textbook. We're not buying any that are new, or any where the teachers have looked at it and said, you know, it's a few years old, but there is no other option out there. We are truly replacing textbooks that need to be replaced, either because of age, or because the curriculum is changing so much that the teachers need to have new resources.
Okay, thanks.
Other comments and questions from the board? Mr. Patton.
Going back to the middle school music, so if we need to add point four of a teacher to offset the, I guess, the study halls and whatever that we didn't have before, what it, so the teacher that was, or that's, I guess, point six now, first question is, who is that teacher? Is that one of the established music teachers? Is that a, a part-time person? Like, who, how does that...
The music staffing is unbelievably complicated, but what normally happens in the middle school is there is a teacher who's, most of the day is, is the chorus teacher, for example, and then that teacher gets a section of keyboarding to teach. So, in other words, I think the only exception to that might be at Fairfield Woods, I think there may be a teacher who's predominant as teaching assignment is the keyboarding class. But, for the most part, they are full-time music teachers who have an assignment that's split between keyboarding and chorus, keyboarding and band, and so they get that section of keyboarding to give their, give them a full teaching schedule.
And is the reason for the middle schools that, that had the, the study hall for one of those periods instead of the, the full three periods, because we did not have the staff to allocate to that classroom?
It was poss, it was partly staffing, it was partly a matter of more students wanting into keyboarding than we could accommodate, but the music teachers also have, in my opinion, an obligation to try to keep kids with them in chorus and band and orchestra, and we really want them to be in a music class. And for many of them, and I've heard several stories from music teachers that, that have spoken to me about it, if they talk to a student individually and say, you know, you're really great, we're doing a musical production, I really would like you to stay in chorus, very often the student will reconsider and decide to stay. But, for students who really want another option, the keyboarding class is an important class, but right now, we don't have room for all of them in keyboarding.
Understood. So, I guess the culmination to this is this point four that we need to add, will that come from existing staff, or will that be some, we're going to literally have to add a body?
Yes, it'd be new, new staffing.
Okay. That's it for music. Through the chair to Dr. Tittle, so taking this whole laundry list of, of ideal additions, and even using just the foreign language in third grade as recommended, it, it looks like we've got about, not quite, one and a half million dollars worth of additions, at least on this list. Is that correct?
Almost.
So...
That's actually overstates it a bit. One thing I need to make clear in this is that the textbooks that you see here on that, on the first part, there is textbook money clearly already budgeted, right? Okay, so...
That's true.
You know, and there's some other things that are in there, these are the biggest chunks, so our, our estimate that we did, we just didn't want to make it, it's very confusing otherwise, it's about a $750,000 net add to the textbook budget if we did all of this. Okay? So, this overstates it by about, whatever that is, 300,000.
Right.
So, your numbers, it's probably closer to 1.2 million net to the budget. Pretty much everything else in here is a pure add. Nothing in here is sort of already allocated to something else, but that one thing, there's already a textbook budget, you know, there's already money allocated to textbooks. So, for example, we, we budgeted for, you know, world language books, you know, this year and purchased them, right? So, we're not purchasing those same ones again. So, there, there's an offset there, but your math is approximately correct.
That's partially where I was going, is I was wondering if, if some of the textbooks were offset by existing numbers in the curriculum.
Yeah, they are, yeah. So, the, so the net, if you wanted to look at it, the net add in the textbook line, should all this go forward, not including math, would be about a plus $750,000, which is about a half a percent in the budget. Our budget's about 160 million. So, you start looking at it in terms of percent that we're adding to the budget, above and beyond what our contractual obligations are, health insurance and so forth, every time you add about $800,000 in, you're, you're adding a half a point to the overall budget request. So, that helps you frame the thing.
Mark, if I could clarify, did you just mention a number that this whole list, net-net, is about a million two?
It's in that range, yeah.
Thank you. Mr. Patton.
And so, the, the yang to that yin, question-wise, is are there any hopeful surprises that will be upcoming that will offset some of this that you know of yet, or will wait till next month?
Yeah, no, we're not, yeah, we, we don't know. I mean, we, you know, there's certain things we, we have a pretty good handle on, like, we know what the contract settlements are for the teachers and administrators, and so, you know about what that is. But, we also have to make sure we get the FTE count right, so you can know what the, the salaries are, but we have to, you know, deal with the FTEs and enrollment shifts and course-taking patterns and so forth. And of course, the biggest unknown is health insurance. And, you know, we'll learn more about that at the next meeting when Aon comes. Those are the big pieces. The other big pieces are utilities. Just got the pricing in from the town on that, I don't think there's any big surprises either way there, but, you know, usage does change. And so, that's, I don't see anything right now out there, but again, we, this is why it's, it's an art, not a science. We've got some big pieces still that need to be put in play, and once we get all of those, we put it all together, then I will, you know, give you obviously a final recommended budget in, in January. But I think the last piece to consider is health insurance, and you'll get that next month.
Anything else? Any other comments from board members? Mr. Llewellyn.
Couple of questions for you, please. So, in terms of the world language, I know we've shifted our curriculum to a different model, so to speak, less on the building blocks and more on the whole language, I guess, and, and cultural awareness. I'd heard from some of the teachers that in terms of the, the level 10s and 20s in the new book, that they're finding it exceedingly difficult. Are we going to do an assessment or get kind of a feedback from them prior to doubling down on the same methodology of teaching? Because they had expressed that, you know, talking about, you know, social issues in French, Spanish, whatever language it may be, is kind of difficult when you don't know the basic words to start with. So, I'm not sure if, if, if we, I, I would ask that the board get a presentation on what folks think of the 10s and 20s before we go in and spend another $200,000 on a similar series for the 3s and the 4s. So, that's my thought there. Like Ms. Maxson-Cannelli, I think I would support adding something in here for math. I think that, that is the kind of thing that would be very useful for, for the kids. In terms of the, the middle school, middle school music, when I saw that, I went back to the district improvement plan, and it falls under the category of revising unified arts offering at the middle schools. So, I was wondering what else you have considered as part of that revision?
I have been looking at the unified arts offerings, and in fact, when I bring the, in March, when I bring the new curriculum, proposed curriculum for the computer classes in grade six and eight, I was going to give you an overview. I'm not going to be recommending we make any other changes in the unified arts right now, because right now, the, the program as it is established leads very clearly and is vertically aligned to our high school offerings. The one major change that the teachers who teach the computers in grade six and eight are making is the grade eight computer class is being written as an introduction to programming and coding. The grade six computer class, and they're changing the name of it, I'm, I'm sorry, I don't want to, I don't remember what they're calling the grade six course, but it is an overview of Microsoft Office Suite.
Okay.
And because we don't offer a computer class in seventh grade, we are building performance-based tasks using technology into the seventh grade core courses, so that they can continue to use the Microsoft Office Suite as an application within content areas. That is the biggest change, because everything else, you know, as the new curriculums come forward, as we bring forward art and tech ed and family consumer science, we'll continue to realign those to the high school, but right now, I believe it, it offers what students need to offer, which is a wide range of, of variety in their middle school elective offerings.
Okay. And then, are we totally eliminating study halls? Because I know that's very productive for some kids.
I, I, my feeling is we, we offer music to all of our students, K through eight, and I, I did, I did talk at length to the middle school principals about this, and they, they are in agreement that students should be in a music class in middle school. Now, there's no other time during the day to offer a study hall. The way the middle school schedule is set up, every day, every period is allotted to a content area.
Okay. I guess in terms of technology, could we, if, if this is something that's going to be recommended in the budget going forward, could we get a presentation on what this is and what this does above and beyond the $35 overhead that is probably sitting in a closet somewhere when we swapped out the whiteboards? Because it sounds very similar to me, because I know some have lights down on them, and you can project up as well. Because I asked of several teachers what this was, and no one had heard of it, so I wasn't sure, you know, exactly what it is. And that's a lot of money, it looks like.
Yes, it is.
So, if we could get a, a presentation of it, that'd be helpful.
Sure.
I'll also say that in reviewing the technology needs in the district, simply following a reasonable replacement schedule of the existing technology is a huge undertaking in this district. And so, anything above and beyond that, anything that we put in, you know, has to be more important than following the replacement schedule, because while we've gradually increased our capital outlay for technology over the five or six years I've been doing this, it just, it, it still is really forcing us to use a lot of equipment beyond its really useful life, and we keep stretching it out. The tech department does a great job with it and so forth, but, you know, we, we're trying to be mindful of the bottom line here, and if at the end of the day, and this is entirely possible between now and when you see the budget... see the budget, at the end of the day, we might determine that document cameras are, don't rise to the level of simply following our replacement cycle. But we just wanted to signal that something new is out there. But the technology needs, I could easily, you know, give you a reasonable list of technology needs that would exceed a million dollars over what's in the budget right now and you wouldn't, nobody would look at it and say, wow, that's outrageous. So the dollars are precious and before we commit to something like that, we want to make sure it's really worth the investment.
Okay.
So that's why we're sort of surfacing these things to sort of get a sense from the board as to how they feel about them. And before we, before we go in, and of course, once you get the budget, you can say, whoa, you know, that's not what I want to do with it, so.
And so do all the classrooms have whiteboards now?
Pretty much.
Yeah.
Yes. There's some, some of the special, you mean smart boards, not, yeah. Some of the, a year or two ago, we, because the the smart boards were kind of being purchased through the PTAs.
Right.
We committed to furnishing every classroom with at least a projection system. So not all teachers had a high comfort level using the interactive smart board, but felt that with the projection system, they could hook their computer to it, they could have as effective a system. So we're still trying to make sure every regular classroom in the elementary level has a smart board and the PTAs have been wonderful in supporting that. We do have in, I think we can say that in every regular classroom, we have at least a projection system beyond the elementary level. Now we're getting requests from some of the specialty classrooms that did not have a projection system or an interactive whiteboard. So we're trying to live up to that to make sure that all the classrooms are created equal. And it's expensive, so.
And I just asked that question with this in mind.
Yeah, yes.
Right.
And we do have, we now have a, once a month, I pull together a district-wide technology committee. So we have representation from all the schools to get a handle on, and they are the group that reviews the requests and what's happening out there, dealing with issues in terms of software, software requests, application requests. And that's where the requests for the document cameras came from. There was a very, very strong feeling that the teachers were in need of them. So that's why we added it to the list because as Dr. Tidal said, we have a mammoth budget in technology. As we, every time we expand more hardware in the district, we have to maintain it and we have to replace it and so it just keeps expanding. So if the, if the teachers hadn't felt so strongly that this was, that the document camera was instructionally important, we, we wouldn't have put it on this list.
Okay.
And we know we may have tough decisions to still make.
Okay. Thank you.
Anthony?
Thanks.
Any other questions of board members? Mr. Calabrese and followed by Mrs. Lou McCormick?
Thank you. First, I just want to say thank you guys so much for presenting this to us and taking the time to thoroughly explain a lot of it. I don't really have any questions, but I'm just going to touch upon some of the things, some of my thoughts on, on this stuff here. Love the textbooks. Obviously, we'd love to see the math textbooks come through. I understand the, the financial situation we're facing there and I know you guys want to make the right decision in choosing the correct books. As far as the, the program assessments go, number two, I think, I think those are great. I know we need the baseline data. I think it prepares our students for the SATs, which obviously is state mandated now. So definitely in favor of that. Middle school music, this might be my favorite topic on here. I definitely support this 100%. I believe that our students do need that. I'm okay with them losing their study hall and going to music. As far as the technology one goes, for the document cameras, I'm going to, I'm going to agree here with Mr. Llewellyn. I personally don't see the need. I'm sure there is some functionality that the teachers would love to have. Is it necessary? You know, I don't know. For $100,000, a little over $100,000, I would love to see that money go towards the world language program. Obviously, world language is something I think needs to be expanded upon. I know the board has agreed to do that. You know, it's going to be, I see it's going to be in steps, you know? If we can find that money to, to make it go K to two and, and expand it there too, I would love to do that. But again, those are just my thoughts and I thank you guys for presenting it to us.
Mrs. Lou McCormick?
I appreciate that introduction, Mr. Calabrese. Actually, would echo some of his thoughts regarding the world language program in particular. I definitely believe in technology and expanding it, but I have to say that, as you know, curriculum and textbooks, instructional development, all of that stuff to me is a priority in spending. And if we could accelerate the expansion of the world language program earlier or accelerate the purchase of elementary math textbooks earlier, I would support either of those initiatives. While it looks like over the next three years, we're looking to basically replace the funding that was cut from the world language program and redistribute how the instructional time is spent so versus just fourth and fifth grade, now we're going to bring it all the way down to kindergarten, but with a lesser frequency. You know, that's good. It's better than what we have now for sure. Could it be even better? I think so. I think if we really want a real world language program, we're never going to get immersion, all right? Immersion means immersion. So teaching to immersion is not really a possibility when you go to public school and you get it for 25 minutes. I mean, it's just not a possibility. So we're going to have to look for smarter ways to teach it via rule-based, via different ways because it's just not going to be the same as a native person or living in a different country. So the sooner we can roll it out to these kids, I think the better off they are. And I think if you're going to concentrate it, you know, infrequent and then you get more frequent and you have to kind of build up that pyramid. And I would say that the longer we take to roll it out, I think kind of the worse the program is and the more kids get affected by it. I'd rather invest fully and just go boom and throw it out there and then let it all kind of roll out together. Because every time, if you roll it out one year later, you've got kids who now have had less, you know what I'm saying? And then we have to adjust the higher levels because these kids got more. So then we're constantly adjusting all the levels every single year as you roll it out step by step, as opposed to just one foul adjustment. So I definitely support that concept of trying to do it sooner rather than later. That's my one comment on world language. Though I do appreciate the initiative to start the process because I think that's wonderful. The other comment I have is on music. Well, again, I'm a huge fan of music. You know, I can't advocate for enough music for kids, but on the other hand, I also can't help but advocate for the minority kid who, music is just not for them. You know, not everything is for everybody. And I don't know when the right place is to acknowledge that or what the right time in their lives are. I guess the sense is that administration feels that middle school, it's required. But I could see the argument where some kids just don't want to do music and maybe they want, maybe they're computer types and they want to learn programming or something. So I can see both sides of that argument. To the extent we could find a flexible option for those kids who just don't fit that stereotype, be it even a small program, I think that would be lovely for public schools to allow the flexibility and acknowledgement that we do have a diverse community with kids who maybe have diverse interests. And I'm not sure when the right time is, but I could see that some kids in middle school might be ready to kind of take their own path. So I'll leave that, you know, I don't want to force my view on someone else. But I would say that the more flexibility we offer, I think the more closely we can meet individual students' needs. And then to the front page regarding the textbooks. I have to agree with Mr. Llewellyn. As you know, my view on the textbooks that we purchased for world language, I have my own views on them. So I would love to see what the feedback is from the ones we've used and how effective they are across the board. Maybe some teachers find them very effective and others don't, but it's kind, it would be interesting to hear kind of the feedback before we double down and continue the series on. If we're finding it to be very effective, then absolutely. But if we're finding that maybe there's a question mark, maybe we reanalyze. You know, I kind of leave that open to kind of hearing more, I'm open to hearing more on the topic before we commit to something like that. On social studies, well, I've heard this from several people now regarding the textbooks and the need for new textbooks. And also the question of, I recall, some schools used their textbooks and others didn't use them in instruction. And so having something consistent. And also, I guess I'll ask the question, when we invest in these textbooks, will they be at grade level? Are we going to be buying lexiles that correspond to the grade level? Because I remember hearing a reason that some of the lexiles were higher than the grade level, so there was increasing difficulty in reading them and therefore they weren't using them. And so I would love to know what lexiles we're using for each grade. Are we going to be grade matching or maybe one grade ahead to challenge the students to learn a little more advanced reading? Or kind of what is our strategy around that? And also regarding the content, geography, hot button, and I know very close to the hearts of many of the teachers, where, you know, do we, in the United States in general, have enough geography and world perspective embedded within our curriculum and within the textbooks that we use? A lot of the kids are geography illiterate. And we just would love to avoid kids like that coming out of Fairfield. If anything, we would love to be model citizens that we actually know where Saudi Arabia and Oman are. And, you know, things like that I think would be, would be wonderful. So if we can buy a textbook that supports that initiative or maybe something supplemental document, I'm not sure how it would be best to work it in, but to somehow work it in through our curriculum, not just in seventh grade, but to work it in as part of the curriculum going up. Because that is a key part, I think, of being a world citizen. And when you go to Europe and you go to Asia and everybody knows and can speak multiple languages and knows the politics around the world and you talk to an American, it's obvious who the American is in the room. So if we can start thinking more globally and look for specific textbooks that address that issue, I think that would be wonderful also. And then finally, regarding the improving instruction of phonemic awareness and fluency among teachers, increase in the presence of core and remedial instructional materials. I'm wondering if you might, I might humor us with maybe sharing information on what thoughts you have regarding what instructional materials you're, you're thinking about? You know, will they be, you know, Lucy Cawkins oriented? Will they be Gillingham oriented? Like what, what types of instructional materials do we find to be the most valuable that we want to invest our direct, or are we going to have a touch of all different types? I would just like to just have a sense of kind of the direction of the instructional enhancement material.
Like Mr. Calabrese, you're offering thoughts and, and you're giving them a heads-up as to the kind of information you'd like and likely to ask when the budget is presented.
Correct.
So, so you may not need to make an immediate comment if you want further.
I can wait.
Consider.
Yes, a lot. I'm just kind of throwing out so that we can have the discussion. This is what I'd be interested in hearing.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Ms. Pitko?
Thank you. I'm, ask, tell me if I'm incorrect, didn't the state of Connecticut just adopt new history/social studies standards? So these textbooks will hopefully be aligned with those standards, K through 12.
We, we approve the curriculum first. Textbooks are always purchased based on the curriculum that we're teaching. And yes, the new curriculum is aligned to the new standards.
So if, if we're finished so that we can move on to other agenda items, but because this is a discussion item that will be leading to a vote in January, is there any member of the public that wishes to comment on this discussion item?
Yes, you can go.
Seeing nobody come forward, thank you very much. I, I'll, I'll ask one comment, or I'll make a rhetorical question that does not require a response. Only three members of this board have been on this board since 2011. And so a comment that says you've heard from the board before that they, they want a hard cover textbook and the online textbooks that may be in our future, I wouldn't want the staff to not consider innovative approaches to education because of past discussions of a board. So I'll just make that as a rhetorical comment. And I will join with all of my board members in thanking you for putting this presentation together. I think it enhances our overall budget review to get kind of a strong program orientation to what the budget's going to look like. Thank you. By prior consent, we are moving on to the superintendent's report for the public. We will be taking action on the Paris contract. We project that. And of course, we will be taking action on the minutes. I can't forecast how long we will be in the executive session. We will move to another room, so those who want to may sit here, but in anticipation of action on those last three items. On to the superintendent's report.
Yeah, I have a little, oh, I have a little catching up to do since the last meeting was some time ago. I sent this out a little bit ago, but I wanted to reiterate it in public that with the Cabe CAPS conference coming up later this week, I just wanted people to remember that Fairfield Public Schools won five awards for excellence in educational communications from Cabe. And that this recognition, in some cases, has been going on for quite some time. Just want to let people know that our budget document that Ms. Muntzell puts together with the help of the whole team, once again, was honored for that. That's won every single year since, since she's been here. The presentation that was done last year by the world language teachers on the world language curriculum won an award for excellence in educational communication. The district website won an award for excellence in educational communication because that's a homegrown website. Some people use a third-party vendor to actually do it. We have our own. And two things near and dear to my heart, one was the budget presentation that I do, the PowerPoint presentation, the one that is the Board of Ed budget given to the town bodies, that one for budget presentation. And much to my surprise, my Twitter account was recognized for that, which I thought people were only interested in during snow days. But, so that's unprecedented for us to win five awards from Cabe. And communications, obviously, is something we take great pride in. It can always be improved, but it's nice to be recognized for that. So I'll be lugging 20 copies of our budget to Cabe and putting them out Thursday night. And by Friday, at about 8:30, they'll all be gone. It's a big hit with the other superintendents. Another positive that I can announce, there'll be a press release coming out on this shortly from the AP, but for the third year in a row, the Fairfield Public Schools has been named to the AP District Honorable, which you had seen, well, people that were on the board previously had seen the results and they were quite, I thought, remarkable, showed more kids, taking more classes, taking more courses. The criteria to get this award is looking at a three-year period of time, increasing participation, increasing and/or maintaining the percentage of exams taken by minority students, and increasing performance levels of the kids compared to two years ago. So there's three prongs to get this. And we're very proud of the advances we've made in that area. More kids and some students who maybe have not traditionally taken AP, we've, we've given access to that. One example the board did relatively recently was adding the AP psychology, really opened that up to some additional students. And actually, something that comes out of the PSAT is they give us another hint about AP potential. So that will help us target some students. So we're really trying to push kids as much as we can. And so it was nice to be recognized for that. The last thing I'll say, well, one other good thing is I just want to say, this has been an unprecedented year for Ward-Ludlow sporting events. I mean, I go to all of them, no matter what the weather. And this year, not only did they play each other in every fall sport, but they managed to play each other twice in the FCAC tournament. So once we have the final one on Thanksgiving Day, the football game, there will have been eight Ward-Ludlow sporting events at the varsity level this year in the fall. Normally, there's six. And if you've never been to one, I would just look at the calendar sometime and go to it because it is just a great experience to sit there. And I can't really root. And I can't really root, so I have to sort of spend some time on each side, and where we can have a tie, I root for that. So it's a little tricky for me, but it's just a great experience. I mean, there's so many great experiences to go to in the school system. I spent three nights in a row after the October 23 event. I needed some therapy, so I went to three music concerts in a row. And that's just another treat. And, you know, you're all welcome to just go to those. It's just incredible. So Ward-Ludlow has really been, it's been a banner year, and we're hoping the volleyball team goes all the way to win the state championship. Two more to go. And the last thing I want to talk about is the October 23 event. The students talked about it. You know, we've had some time to reflect on that. You know, that's one of those days I'll probably never forget in my career. You can't drill to lock down 17 schools all at once for two hours. There's no way to really prepare for that. And, you know, obviously, we did get a lot of positive comments about that from a lot of people. I think I got more unsolicited feedback from people in random places than ever about this, which was great. But I really think what it did was it showed that all the training we have done with our staff, with our principals, and with our students paid off. And although, you know, I feel like we did well with that, as I think I said in the media that, you know, we are a learning organization, a school system, and we can do better and be better prepared the next time. And one thing that this event triggered for us was we found some things we could do better that we never would have found had this event not happened. It's a tough way to learn it. And so I've had actually four separate debriefings with staff and with the police and fire department, and we're putting together an action plan to address some of the issues that now we know about. And at least one of them does deal with the infrastructure. And fortunately, we have an opportunity to go back for a capital request on security infrastructure. You might remember, last year, we made a request to the town for security infrastructure. The town funded about half of it and said, come back for the next half. So we have an opportunity to go back for infrastructure, and we've learned some things about our infrastructure that we could improve upon. I'll just tell you, what we found was that a number of people who were traveling about, whether they were itinerant staff members, or they could have been vendors, or maintenance workers, whatever, they didn't know necessarily we were in lockdown. And they would show up to a school, and because we have so many doors, and we have a FOB system and so forth, we had, you know, staff members, you know, not realize we were in lockdown, enter buildings. And I know that one of our music teachers sort of made light of it at one of the concerts at Ludlow. But the fact is that we need a way to signal to people who are coming into our parking lots to see that the school's in fact in lockdown. And so we're going to look at some electronic way to do that, you know, so that when the school goes in lockdown, somebody flips a switch from any parking lot, you can see some visual signal, and people will know that if you go to a school and you see that, you'll know the school's in lockdown. So that's the kind of thing we're trying to, you know, improve upon as we move forward. There were some other things. I had a very good meeting, I thought a good conversation, the police chief, myself, the first electman with PTA council, a week ago Monday about this. The chief is going to make the rounds to all the PTAs, talking about safety. And I'll be doing a webinar in January for all the superintendents across the state. The State Superintendent's Association feels that sort of the lessons we learned here in Fairfield really should be shared with other superintendents around the state. And it's too late to get it on the CAPE CAPS agenda, but colleagues around the state were very impressed with the way Fairfield handled it, and they want to know more. So I'll be doing that sometime in January. So we're continuing to work to improve things, and I really feel that the parents, the students, and the staff did a marvelous job of heeding the advice and following what they're supposed to do. And, you know, if Chief McNamara was impressed, then I know we've done something right, as he's a tough customer. So anyway, that's my take. So that's superintendent's report.
Any questions of the superintendent on the various topics? Mrs. Maxon Cannelly, followed by Mrs. Lou McCormick.
Just one quick comment. I want to follow up on what Dr. Title said regarding the PTA council meeting. Just to add a little bit of color to that, I was going to do it later in the liaison report, but I'd rather do it now while some people are still here, which was, I mean, this was a solid 75 minutes of Dr. Title, Chief McNamara, and First Electman Mike Tetro. They were just up there, not only speaking, taking questions, really going over some pot, you know, things they learned, things that can be done better. And I just, I know, I think the people there were very appreciative, but that, this was no five to 10-minute talk at all. This was a solid 75 minutes plus, so I think that was really appreciated.
Mrs. Lou McCormick.
Yes, so this is related to, I guess, the concept of our superintendent's report. And again, this is my third year of wishful thinking, but I'm going to say it again. Actually, here, let me get this out first.
Do you have a question for Dr. Title?
Yes, I do, but I want to put it in context.
Not sure what you're handing out.
Oh, I'm just, yeah.
I appreciate that you're bringing a topic up to discuss or comment on, but the purpose of the superintendent's report is to ask questions of the superintendent?
No, I am going to ask the question.
As opposed to introducing a new idea?
No, 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 this is not a new idea. I'm asking the question because, and I'm raising the issue again, because I was hoping this would have been part of the student, the report, the superintendent's report, because of an updated revision, you know, under the substitute House Bill Number 6834. I just wanted to ask again, if you read this, these are kind of the roles, and under this first meeting, I was hoping that under the superintendent's report, we would have had the strategic school profile report, as is my wishful thinking every year.
Could you focus on Dr. Title's comments?
So I'm wondering if we will have this report for this meeting, or if we can expect it at our next superintendent's report? Because according to this, these are all the items that would be wonderful to start the year off, and I find it very helpful to have this be part of our next superintendent's report, to the extent that it's not being presented tonight.
Thank you.
When it gets issued, we will present it at the next board meeting, and it has not been issued.
So we're not discussing items that are not on the agenda.
I'll leave this available for the public.
You have another question for Dr. Title. We're not discussing that topic. You have another question for Dr. Title.
On, then maybe this is just wait for open board comment in terms of?
You're welcome to say whatever you want, an open board comment, but we're not discussing a topic that's not on the agenda. Let's just.
Okay, then what I'll say through the chair to Dr. Title is, I'll wait for open board comment.
Thank you. Other questions of the superintendent? Other questions of the superintendent? If not, we'll move on to item D, approval of the collective bargaining agreement. And so we will be going into executive session, so the recommended motion is that the Board of Education hereby moves into executive session to discuss records, reports, and statements of strategy or negotiations with respect to collective bargaining in accordance with Connecticut General Statute, CGS, Section 1210B9, and invite Mrs. Leford to attend. Do I have a motion?
I'll make the motion.
Mr. Calabrese, seconded by Mrs. Pitco. I'm sorry, I will get it. I will get it. I'm sorry. Any discussion on this motion? Hearing none, all in favor of moving into executive session? Please raise your hand. Please raise your hand. It's unanimous. Okay, thank you. My notes. It's unanimous. Thank you very much. Approval of the minutes, recommended motion that the Board of Education approve the minutes of the October 6, 2015 regular meeting, which is enclosure number four. Turn that one over. Here we go. Closure number four. Do I have a motion, Mrs. Gerber, followed by Mrs. Maxon Cannelly? You can second the next one. Any discussion on the minutes of October 6?
Yes, I'd like to make a friendly amendment.
To what?
First page, under about a third of the way, three-fourths of the way down, Mr. Llewellyn's comments, I just think says, but students are allowed to go to the cafeteria first, and then the cafeteria. I think it's supposed to be to the library first, and then the cafeteria, for what it's worth.
So the second, which one's the library, the first cafeteria or the second?
Well, I believe it's library should be preferred.
And then the library, the last word.
Library. Change cafeteria to library.
Yeah, okay. Any objection to that from any board member? Hearing none, then consider that to be part of the main motion.
It's right there.
Any other corrections to the minutes? Hearing none. The motion is that the Board of Education approve the minutes of the October 6, 2015 regular meeting, as has been corrected by a friendly amendment. All in favor, please raise your hand. It's approved 9-0, thank you. The second motion is that the Board of Education approve the minutes of the October 20, 2015 special meeting, which is enclosure number five. Do I have a motion? Mrs. Maxon Cannelly, seconded by Mr. Patton. Any questions or comments or changes to this set of minutes? Seeing no hand raised, all in favor that the Board of Education approve the minutes of the October 20 special meeting? Please raise your hand. Okay, Mr. Patton, Ms. Carnell, Mrs. Gerber, Philip Dwyer, Mr. Calabrese, Ms. Pitco, Mrs. Maxon Cannelly, all opposed. Mrs. Lou McCormick and Mr. Llewellyn. The motion passes 7 to 2. Thank you very much. Superintendent's report has already been given. Any committee or liaison reports that need to be made? Anybody? I see nobody making a comment. What? Go ahead.
Right now, the only thing before policy, as we've been waiting for the audit to come back, is the Board of Ed handbook, so I'd just like to toss out there to Dr. Title, Mr. Dwyer, Mr. Calabrese, and Ms. Pitco. I would very much appreciate getting any feedback from you on how useful or not portions of that were. So I don't need to know now, but an email would be great.
And that will eventually show up on a policy committee agenda. Any other committee or liaison reports? Mr. Patton.
I can't find my Board of Health notes, but I did talk to several of you offline and mention this, but the Board of Health.
You talked to three other people offline.
At most.
At most. You did not talk to a majority of board members offline.
No, I did not.
Thank you.
No, I didn't.
So please continue.
At any rate, my point being is that the issue came up with regards to the new food and allergy policy, and the soluble wipe, or insoluble wipe, whatever it is, issue that the board and Dr. Title and staff have been researching, and the Board of Health has been researching. And the bottom line is that there is no actual product that meets the criteria that we may have set forth that the Board of Health can find, or the state could find. They went to the state experts as well. So we may be back to the drawing board on that one.
Mr. Patton is the liaison to the Board of Health, so he was commenting on behalf of that Board of Health, not on behalf of the policy committee.
Correct.
Any other committee or liaison reports? None, on to open board comment. Mr. Llewellyn, start with you, and go around.
Sure. Thank you. I've received a number of calls, I'm sure many of you have, as it relates to the iReady information that's being disseminated out to parents. I know the board had seen stuff like, you know, student profile reports that provided a fair amount of detail, as well as major sees of how students are falling out, both within district and out of district. But what I've heard from parents is different folks are receiving different information in terms of the level. I think that, you know, some folks have been told they can't have the full iReady reports. I think in terms of the reports, that it's not that dissimilar to other standardized tests where the results should be shared with parents. And I think it'd be great if the district wanted to provide a presentation to a wider group, maybe at a board meeting, so that folks can understand how they fit in and what it means. Because as I look at some of the sample reports that were handed out back when we went through the kind of the definition of iReady, it gives it to you, you know, by level, numbers and operations, algebra, algebraic, as opposed to just a single number, which I believe is what some students did receive. I think that the parents are probably entitled to receiving this information at a granular level, and I'm not sure if it's going to be shared, or if it's something they need to request under FERPA. But, you know, if we're asking our kids to take tests, we should be willing to share that, at least the results, with those parents, so they know where the strengths and the weaknesses are.
Thank you. Mrs. Maxon Cannelly?
I'm not going to direct this comment at any one person. I'm going to ask that, well, obviously asking it of myself, and I'm asking it of the other eight members as well, to remember that a basic courtesy to our staff is to not blindside them with information and requests and topics, that there have been topics brought up tonight that could have been emailed in advance, perhaps even been addressed in advance. But this blindsiding needs to stop its basic courtesy and consideration, and it needs to be called on it. And I'd like to not start this new term with calling individuals. I'd like to ask all members to remember that basic tenet of consideration and courtesy.
Thank you. Mrs. Pitco. Ms. Pitco. Mr. Calabrese.
I just want to say thank you to all eight of you guys for being very welcoming tonight. I'm looking forward to working with each of you, and if there's anything I can do, obviously, let me know. I'm looking forward to working with you. Thanks.
Okay. Mrs. Gerber?
Yeah, well, just one thing to address, something that came up early on the meeting. The Sticks for Soldiers is November 28 at Ludlow High School. And also, I know that the Ludlow rep mentioned that the volleyball game, the semifinal states for Ludlow is Thursday, is in fact tomorrow, at Foreign High School in Milford. And I unfortunately can't go, but I would highly recommend anyone to go, because I went to the, when they beat Darian in the FCX, and it was one of the most exciting sporting events I've ever been to in my life. That's a very intense group of girls. And they played just fantastically, so just highly recommend it.
Ms. Carnell. Mr. Patton. Mrs. Lou McCormick.
And just as a follow-up to the information I sent out, I just hope that everybody will just take a look at it, because it is new information, and I think it's good to share information broadly with the boards, so everybody can be on the same page. And I look forward to this year again, hopefully starting off on a new foot, and making sure everybody does start off on the same page. And I do hope that we can take a look at that, and maybe take a look at the statistics that we have, and the performance, and all of that, all together in a room, and discuss them, and be able to make better policy decisions and move forward more cohesively as a board, I think, where we have and share the same information. So I hope, again, this year, for us to continue that trend. And I will share whatever information I have with everyone, not to blindside you, but to actually share it. And then, following that, ask if the board would be interested in taking action on some of those commentaries that I share, because some of them are very educationally relevant, and I think would benefit our town and our community greatly.
You have in front of you the proposed BOE meeting dates. These will
of those commentaries that I share, because some of them are very educationally relevant, and I think would benefit our town and our community greatly.
You have in front of you the proposed BOE meeting dates. These will be made official at the December meeting, but we're just giving advance notice of what they will be. You may want to wait till December to actually put them into your calendars in the event that something, some reason causes it to change. I will say that I attended a school PTA meeting. Forget which school, but, yeah, you know, because I get a bunch of them. And the principal and various staff members were making presentations on how to interpret the iReady, the STAR, and whatnot. And inquiring with the principal, there was a standard presentation that was developed by the central office and given to each, with the principals, obviously, given to each principal so that they could make a presentation at each of their schools as an, as an effort to try and get information out in a consistent fashion. 1,000, huh?
Osborne Hill.
Osborne Hill. 1,000 teachers and, and 17 different schools. Sometimes consistency is always an issue. Motion to adjourn? Mrs. Maxon-Cannelli, seconded by Mr. Calabrese. All in favor, please raise your hand. We're done. Thank you.